Go to the website.
She's on there. Got it? Well, if that's the case, I guess we can. Is everybody all set? Everybody ready? On that now? All right, you all set? I would like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Turner, would you be of assistance?
I would be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Sue. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Mayor Bagby?
Present.
And are there any conflict of interest declarations?
Madam Mayor, I will be recusing myself from item number 14, the Exchange Bank presentation. I still receive compensation from Exchange Bank.
And agenda review. Any changes or deletions, City Manager?
Mayor, Council, there are no changes to the agenda. I do want to make a note regarding item 15 as well as item 18. Item 15 is a discussion and possible action on the establishment of an ad hoc committee relative to the purpose of reviewing potential consideration for fireworks. I just wanted to point out to Council that the discussion tonight is not about a ban on fireworks. It is to discuss whether the Council would like to establish an ad hoc committee to review and study a proposed ban. And so the action that's on the agenda tonight is quite different than a ban. I just saw a lot of information on social media suggesting that the discussion tonight was about the ban and...
The nonexistent ban.
So, it's not a ban. It's about establishing an ad hoc committee. This issue had come up in the past and Council at the time took similar action to establish an ad hoc, really to review and discuss the matter. And that involves getting community input from, you know, various organizations and parties relative to that issue. And so I just wanted to make sure, because I know there's a lot of folks that are here to speak on that, that it's clear that the agenda item tonight is really just to discuss whether to form an ad hoc to discuss it. It's not to consider a ban. Certainly, you could follow logically that the outcome could be upon further discussion that ad hoc makes a recommendation, but that's not a foregone conclusion. That's really the purpose of forming an ad hoc is to review and discuss the matter in more detail, get more input, allow for flexibility for the ad hoc committee members to meet with the community, and ultimately come back and provide a recommendation to Council. The other item I just wanted to report on is item number 18. That's a resolution regarding zero waste. We are hoping to have Leslie Lukats, the Executive Director for Zero Waste Sonoma, join us this evening. She is traveling and I know she's on her way, so there may be, if Mayor, if you're okay with it, some flexibility with that particular item number when Leslie arrives so that she can speak to the matter. I know she wanted to address the Council with respect to the resolution that's in your package this evening.
Does anybody mind if we shuffle things based on when Leslie arrives? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Great. I think it should also be noted on item 14 that this was brought, this is not, the impetus was not staffer Council, it was brought by a group of citizens who were interested in us revisiting this. And we will only be discussing the formation of an ad hoc to further discuss it this evening. So, great. So with that, that concludes Agenda Review. And at this time, we'll have public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the Council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium when advised by the Mayor and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized by the Mayor. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Getting my timer out. Okay, well, seeing none, we will move on to, we are no proclamations and presentations, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any Councilmember or member of the public requests that item to be removed and considered separately. Would any member of the Council like to remove any of the consent items?
May we please discuss item number 12 in further detail? It is the budget amendment and the amount of $17,000 for disaster preparedness.
Certain items, okay. So, can we remove item 12 and consider it separately? So, seeing that we are going to remove item 12, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding item 12, please.
Sir, a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Sue, we, roll call when you're ready.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item 12. Is there something you wanted to bring to the...
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification and see if maybe we can manipulate the language just a little bit. I recall County Supervisor James Gore verbally committing to approximately $5,000 from his discretionary fund to help fund this project. I was hoping we could change the language to an amount not exceeding $17,000, so if that should happen to not come to fruition, it still gives us the ability to move forward on the project. However, I would still like to move forward, or sorry, follow up with him to see if those funds are in fact available.
City Manager, did you have a comment on that?
I agree. That certainly needs to, up to the Council, if you'd like to add language. I think that's the intent. The professional services agreement that is proposed with Nuestra Comunidad is for an amount not to exceed $17,000. That, what, that does not reflect is the county's contribution. Ultimately, what we're asking for the Council to take, action to take tonight is to adjust the budget to allow for the additional expenditures of $17,000. What we'll ultimately do is offset that on the revenue side with a potential $5,000 from the county's contribution. But we'd still need to do the budget amendment to reflect that there's expenditures allowed in the amount not to exceed $17,000, because that's ultimately the cost of the contract for, or, you know, the cost associated with the services that would, to be provided. So, the language in the agreement itself does reflect it's not to exceed $17,000.
Is that satisfactory?
Yeah, especially if we're gonna, if we can use the $5,000 as revenue to offset at a later time, this allows more flexibility to ensure we can move forward while that bureaucracy is overcome. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And everybody who hasn't on the dais, I need to probably change your settings to airplane mode so that we don't have that microphone interference. I know I'm guilty of that, so if we could have everybody do that, that'd be great. All right, is there any further discussion or questions on this item? Sir, you said, are you...
I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to approve item number 12, budget amendment in the amount of $17,000 for disaster preparedness project and approving related contract with Nuestra Comunidad.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
All right, and under Communications, we're seeing none, so in Public Hearings, we're seeing none, and moving on to New Business. But before we do, I realize I was remiss, we did not have a chance to welcome our new Police Chief. So, welcome. Would you, can I put you on the spot and ask you to say a few words?
It's not, I haven't been put on the spot before. Thank you for this introduction. It's funny, I came into the office today and everybody thought I was being sworn in again. I was like, that happened on August 5th, so we've got that covered. But since I've been here, I've been very welcomed by both the community and the staff here, as well as my Police Department. This is a wonderful place to be. I'm very happy that I made this decision, and I look forward to moving, moving on and taking the department into the future.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
The honeymoon is officially over. So, now, now the honeymoon is officially over.
Now?
That was it.
Yeah.
So, moving on here, on to item number 13 under New Business, Measure M Parks Expenditure Policy Discussion.
Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to our City Engineer to introduce and discuss. And I know joining us in the audience tonight is our Parks and Maintenance Facility Lead, Hector Galvan, and he may also want to weigh in or be available for any questions or comments that Council may have about this particular agenda.
So, before you, Councilmembers, this is an outline of three options to expand Measure M funds. And the Measure M funds are the ones that were passed in 2018. This is the one-eighth of a cent sales tax that goes, collects for the next 10 years and is dedicated to, to support our parks, whether that's infrastructure projects or operational support. So, we've placed before you three options, expanding 100% of the funds towards a maintenance worker, 50% of the funds towards a maintenance worker, and some park improvements, or 100% of the park improvements. So, we're looking for your guidance in terms of how you want to proceed with this expenditure. We are collecting the funds right now, and hopefully we'll be collecting about, somewhere close to $100,000 this year. So, what I see for you is the three options, and I've got Hector Galvan here, who's the lead worker for the parks, and he's here to give you any answers you may have in regards to the operations or some of the proposed projects for these parks.
See, Hector, did you want to come forward now and talk about? Sure, please do.
Here's your chance, Hector.
Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff, Mark pretty much covered the whole, the whole presentation there. Thank you for that. But, yeah, thank you for the, for taking the time to review the three options for Measure M funds. I just highlighted here some of the, some of the, I guess, new acquired maintenance responsibilities that we've been maintaining the last few years. And one of them is, you know, the implementation of organic herbicides and replacing Roundup chemicals like glyphosate. And just to give everybody a little, just a little, an example of how this works, previously in the past, we used to apply one application of Roundup. And with organic herbicides, we're going to have to perform four applications of Roundup, which, I mean, of organic herbicides, which is going to, you know, add up as far as, you know, maintenance and labor hours, and not only that, the cost of organic herbicides add a little bit higher than glyphosate. So, that's one of the maintenance. The second one is the acquisition of the 260-plus acres of Portofield Creek open space. The amount of trail maintenance and vegetation management, it's another added responsibility, you know, for us, for our Parks guys. There is, now we have greater impacts in our city parks. There's more, more folks using the parks. There's a lot more activities downtown, which requires, you know, extra attention from us and my, and my staff. And just previously in 2008, there used to be, before 2008, when we had that recession, we had three full-time Parks employees. So, just to give you guys a little history there, but I just, at this point, I'm just looking at you guys for some guidance and for your direction.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, if I can, just to add a few points relative to the three, the three options. And first, I want to take the opportunity to thank Mark and particularly Hector for preparing the three options and outlining those for the Council's consideration. One thing that's not explicitly addressed in the agenda report is how this revenue is, is treated. As the City Engineer indicated, this is revenue that we are expected to receive due to the one-eighth cent tax measure. This revenue is not currently reflected in the budget, so ultimately what we'll, will be necessary to do is to bring this back for a budget amendment and reflect the revenue. What we're here, here tonight is to show, or identify and get Council's input on how you would like to direct staff on the expenditure of that planned revenue. The, the measure that was passed by the voters of Sonoma County set forth that we are required to maintain a maintenance of effort, and that means that we have to use the funds, we can't use the funds to offset existing expenses. We have to use the funds to plan for new expenses. And, and that's exactly what Hector has done, and Mark has outlined expenditure options for these funds going forward. In kind of round numbers, a way to think about this is, you know, roughly $100,000 per year over a 10-year period. So, you're looking at about a million dollars that is, is intended to be spent towards parks. And it's, it's really up to Council's direction on how you would like to see those funds allocated. And kind of what, in a nutshell, the way that's been outlined by, by your staff is you have the option of dedicating it all to new, to personnel, to kind of splitting those, those funds between a combination of, of new personnel and new park improvements, or all towards new park improvements, you know, physical improvements. So, those are kind of three broad options. Obviously, there's a lot of nuances in between there in terms of how you may want to allocate that, that, that revenue that we're expected to receive from that, from the tax measure, and we, we wanted to get your input on that. One thing to note, at least with respect to option one, that option is really a full staffing position. There will be, if Council wants to go down that path, there will be additional costs related to, you know, long-term costs related to pension liability, and that's something just be cognizant of if you, if you think your interest is in terms of adding a full-time, a full-time position. With respect to option two, you know, we, there is an existing part-time worker within the Parks Maintenance Person. We could, we could add another part-time person, which brings the equivalent of a full-time position, but it, it does so in a manner that doesn't burden the city with a, you know, a full cost pension liability. So, there's a little bit of flexibility there. Obviously, option three is kind of completely dedicated to park improvements, and I think, you know, Hector really understands, you know, what are some of the needs that we, we have within our parks. But Council may also want to weigh in on, you know, some of the park improvements that are identified here. Some of the things that are kind of sitting out there that you, you may want to consider either now or in the future include things like construction of a, of a new skate park. And you could, you know, look at how we might set aside some funds in, you know, future years towards the cost of that project. Certainly, I know there's been discussion amongst Council about, about a dog park. And so, you know, those are kinds of things that you can, you might want to think about as you're looking at, at options. Again, this is our first year that we're going to start receiving revenue, so you have, you'll have opportunities to, to continue to look at this on an annual basis, but, but tonight, really to give us the direction on how best, on how best to proceed in terms of identifying this revenue in, in your budget.
Thank you. So, at this time, I think I'll let the, don't go anywhere, Hector. I'm going to...
Sorry.
I know you want to get out of here since you can't, but I just wanted to give the Council a chance to ask any, you know, particular technical questions of Hector or City Engineer. So, I'll start at my left.
I just have one technical question. David, you had commented that this money must be expended on new items, it can't be spent on existing. Did I understand that correctly?
It, it can be used to improve existing infrastructure, you know, where particularly, I think, and that's something that our Parks Maintenance Lead identified, is there, there are certain replacements, certain improvements, but what we, we can't use it to offset existing expenses.
Okay. You had mentioned that there's a, there's currently a part-time seasonal worker, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and this would be two 1,000-hour employees in addition to that existing part-time that I'm reading here, is that correct?
This would be the addition of one part-time person, under option two.
To bring us to a, to bring us to a total of two.
Right.
Thank you.
Under option one, it would be one full-time position. It's just a six-month stint, though, right? It's not, it's not year-round.
No, it's a six-month engagement there, under option two at 50%.
Right.
Yeah, first line.
And there's some flexibility on the, the timing. Really, when we talk about part-time staff, we talk about less than 960 hours per year. So, it, it's, it's a decision that the City Engineer and the Parks Maintenance Lead can, can determine on how to allocate those hours. It can be, if you want a person full-time, you know, in essence, it, it results in working a six-month period, but if you stretch that out, it can, you have some flexibility. You know, for example, you know, in the wintertime, you may have a little less activity, so you might be able to reduce some of the hours and move those over into other months. So, there's, there's flexibility around the timeframe of those allocation of those hours over a particular fiscal year.
Am I understanding that you could use the 1,000 hours over a period that goes beyond six months from hour one to hour 1,000, should you choose?
That's correct.
Thank you.
No.
Yes, I have a question regarding a part-time employee. Is it possible to raise that to maybe 75%?
That, that is an option with, with, with the Council's direction. The, the, the impact of that will, will have to be more closely evaluated because you'd be beyond the limit set by PERS, and so that, that employee would then become a pension obligation once you exceed the 960 hours in a particular year.
Okay, may I ask Hector? Hector, I have a question for you. How, how easy is it to hire someone part-time? Or how difficult?
It's, it's very difficult. It's very hard to hire a temporary worker, especially, we got really lucky with Brian, our current temporary worker. He's retired, he's a retired Coast Guard, and so he, his work in part-time for him is, works out good. But it is very, it's challenging to find temporary workers, especially if we want them to work a few months out of the season and then lay them off for a few months and hiring them back three months later. Or even just, or even just working them six months straight. It's challenging to find, to find temporary workers. I, we've had little success finding them.
Okay, well, with that, I'm...
Just a couple.
Oh, oh, go right ahead.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple. You know, I think it's a great idea if we can hire one full-time person. Unfortunately, you know, I have to agree with our City Manager as far as potential PERS...
We're deliberating now, we're just asking questions.
PERS liabilities and all. But just a couple of questions. Hector, we have down here River Park repairs along the River Park.
Yes.
We're sharing those with the county, right?
Yes, we have a, we have a property line. If you walk the River Park Trail where the bridge is...
Yeah.
On this side of the bridge, south of the bridge is city, city property, and north of the bridge is county property. And the areas that I identified as, you know, trail maintenance, there is some tree work that needs to be done down there, there's some trail repairs. The signage is getting to be to a point where we need to replace them, just little, just maintenance, infrastructure repairs.
In Ferber Park, we're talking about partial replacement. What, what's going on there?
The playground, the playground structure at Ferber Park, it's, it's getting to be, we've made some, some repairs to keep it open, and we're still complying with the state, but that's one of our oldest playground structures. And so, that's the reason why I put it down in there, just to have some, some planning for the future, for future repairs or future replacement of the entire structure.
And that's going to take five years at $33,000?
It's very expensive. Roughly, roughly, to replace that playground structure, you're looking at maybe $180 to a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And then, lastly, the plaza.
Yeah.
You know, we, we really have to take care of what we have. In the, in the plaza, last year or the year before, David, we just spent a considerable amount of money to redo the, the cover over the stage, and hopefully we'll find some money out of this to give that a coat of vannish every year and, and just keep up with that maintenance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, don't go very far.
Stay right here.
And so, at this time, this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment, and so anyone who would like to come forward to discuss this item, you have three minutes. All right, giving everybody a chance. All right. You don't have to raise your hand, you just have to come on down and talk into the microphone, and you get three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Dan Fitzsimmons, Cloverdale resident. Regarding the, the work that, that I've seen since I've been here, and since I've been integral part of the preserved, Portofield Creek Preserve Trail Maintenance and setting that all up, I have to really say how grateful all of us volunteers have been for the work that Hector and his team have done. Just remarkable, tireless, quick to respond, and we, we really need to take care of these guys, because they're, they're really good workers. That's it.
Thank you. So, Hector, if you ever want to move back to Cloverdale, you can run for City Council, because you're a pretty popular guy. So, with that, I'm going to ask, would anyone else like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing that, I want to bring it back to the Councils for deliberation, and I started with my left before, so I'll start to my right this time. Did you want to, do you have a preference on an option?
Well, I really see the need for, for a worker. However, I also believe that the residents of Cloverdale would like to see improvements in the playgrounds, et cetera. And since this is additional money, does it mean that perhaps you could have a, down the road contemplate a budget amendment for parks improvements within the city budget so that perhaps if we need to get a worker, since it cannot be 75%, it has to be 50%? Maybe we could come to a happy medium? So, because I, I've heard both sides, you know, we need a worker, and people also want to see the improvements that are essential.
So, did you have something that you wanted to add, Susie?
She would explode, I know, talking more.
The only thing that I would say is that if we do a three-quarter time employee, just as David had mentioned earlier, that now they're a perishable employee and they're also eligible for benefits. So, that's not a number that we had, have calculated. That's not, that's not one of the scenarios that we brought forward.
We can certainly discuss it this evening and discuss the pros and cons, and we can take it to a, a different evening, or we can, you know, find out where the temperature of the Council is. Joseph, anything you wanted to add?
And, and Mayor, as Councilmember Cruz alluded, ultimately, the goal tonight is to get your direction so that staff can bring back a budget amendment to reflect the revenue in the, in the budget, but also the expenditure. Council will have the option, really with every budget going forward, to change direction if you, if you so desire, but this is, because this is new revenue that just literally...
But this is, because this is new revenue that just literally started coming in. You know, this year, we wanted to kind of get your direction so that, you know, it could be reflected in the budget. Obviously, if we go down the staffing route, that's more of a permanent decision than, you know, looking at it kind of on a year-to-year basis. But that's at the discretion of the council.
Okay. Great. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. Mr. Cruz, Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in favor of option two, and let me tell you why. It kind of satisfies both ends. It gives us a part-time employee to help Hector with his chores, and it also gives us about $50,000, $55,000 a year to accomplish some neglected maintenance that we always seem to have. So I'm for option two.
Okay, great. Who would like to start?
Hi, Ken. I would, I would much prefer going with option one, only in that I think that any worker that the city, in the city, should have a full-time job. I know we would give them benefits, but the trend of doing part-time just so you don't have to give people benefits and don't have to give them a retirement just bothers me. And it always has, and it always will. And so I would like to see us, we have one part-time person, so why don't we just add one full-time person, and we would still have some money left over then that we've already allocated, so we could have a full-time person plus a little money left over if we added it to that part-time person and made one full-time. That would be my preference because if they're working for the city or if they're working for a business, it doesn't matter. They need to survive here, as expensive it is, as it is. Hector and you guys are going to have a horrible time trying to find a part-time person that we keep laying off and hiring and laying off and hiring. I just don't think it's a fair way to go.
Thank you. I absolutely can understand Mary Ann's point of view, but I still find myself leaning towards option number two. In an ideal world, yes, we would give benefits and a pension to every single person that we could, but we have to make sure that we don't commit all of the money that was proposed to the taxpayers for improvements to overhead costs. I do believe that we should move forward on some of these projects that Hector has recommended in here, although I would, as we move forward with this, like to see a little bit more detail about $10,000 to annual amount for operation of the open space, when it would seem to me some of that would be labor, which would be a part of the $20,000 that came from that seasonal worker. But I also understand that factored into that $10,000, you had increased herbicides that might need to be used, et cetera. So we didn't ask you to break it down for this. When looking at option two, I might ask it get broken down a little bit further so we can make sure that we're absolutely informed. But I just don't think I can commit the city to the expenses of a full-time employee. I just don't, I don't, I don't see that being the best route for this. Option two for me, please.
So I think there's, there's pretty much consensus, and I, you know, I want to look you in the eye. I hope you know that I want to get you that full-time person, but my, and I think Councilmember Brigham is absolutely right. Anybody who has a job with us should have a pension and benefits. But the issue that I have is that I can't offer a pensionable and benefit job when the income expires in 10 years. I can't do that to the person, and I can't do that to our pension liability. So what I want to do is work on finding a way to fund that position for you, but I'm not comfortable, I'll never be comfortable funding a position like that with something that is going to sunset on us. So for that reason, I've got to, I've got to support option two. And I hope you understand why, and that's where I'm coming from, and I'm going to work hard on getting you that because I know you need it.
Appreciate it. Thanks for all your help. I mean, that's all I'm asking, just an acknowledgement of, we are, you guys see my weekly report?
It's ridiculous.
I only put about a quarter of what we do in there because then I would just be showing off, but...
That's okay. I see you when I'm walking by on every day. I see what you're doing every day.
But we're running around out there, and I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that we needed the help. I've been a city employee for 11 years, and I care about my community. This is my community. I grew up here. My kids grew up, are growing up here. My parents are Cloverdalian since 1945, from 1950. And yeah, I wouldn't be here if I didn't, if I didn't need the help. So really, really appreciate you guys taking the time and effort on this matter.
I think that right now, just with the revenue source, that's the best we can do. And we are going to work, continue to work hard and try to find you that other salaried employee. Because I do agree, I think anybody working for us should be able to have that security, that benefit, those benefits, but there's no security if the, if the revenue source dries up. And then it's the added, it's the added burden to the taxpayers of, you know, having to scramble to find a way to make that pension obligation. So thanks for understanding and thanks for doing such a great job for us.
Appreciate it. Thank you guys for taking the time.
Okay, so I think we have fairly good direction. Would someone like to craft a motion? I think I'm hearing support for, for option two, so would someone like to bring this forward?
Not me.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion, please, for the expenditures of Measure M money that we take option number two, where we will split that with one part-time employee, and the other 50% would go towards overdue maintenance on some of our parks.
And is there a second?
I will second.
Councilmember Brigham?
No.
Councilmember Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
And Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to item 14, I believe our vice mayor needs to recuse himself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. And that is, the magic may or may not happen. There it is. Great. Do we have the representative, do we have, do we have someone from Exchange Bank coming and doing the presentation?
Yes.
Great. Welcome. While that, while the screen is coming down and the vice mayor is excusing himself, we have transfer funds from unspent bond proceeds and an open investment account at Exchange Bank. Is that going to be you, Susie?
Yeah.
Great.
I'll start.
Great. You know what? On that note, we are going to take a two-minute recess, if we may, while we get the screen and everything, everything arranged. Thank you.
Screen's almost down.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm responsible, which is good because I wasn't sure. Should I pull out my little red pointers if I want to highlight things? Oh, wonderful. So it's in the middle of the arrows then? Okay, beautiful.
Here we are.
All right. Does anybody know where Councilmember Brigham went? Okay.
She's over there.
Okay. Well, you know what? I think we're going to, guys? We're going to call the meeting to order and take it back up at item 14, transfer funds from unspent bond proceeds and open an investment account at Exchange Bank. I bet you must be from Exchange Bank.
I am, Madam Mayor. Thank you. And thank you, council and staff, for asking me to come tonight. My name is Bill Sullivan. I'm a senior investment officer with the Trust and Investment Management Department at Exchange Bank. I'm one of the two officers assigned to the current account that you have with us. And I'm here to speak to you tonight about the separate investment fund that you're considering. As you know, the plan is to, there we go, learned to drive the technology here. As you know, the plan is to invest in California municipal bonds with a targeted ending value mid-year 2038 of $1.8 million. Permitted investments under your investment policy, which flows from the State of California recommendations, is that munis have to mature with a maximum maturity of five years. So zero to five years is okay. Anything beyond that is not okay. These also have to be non-AMT bonds, which means they're not subject to alternative minimum tax. And so I put that up there. The next slide, and I apologize for those of you in the audience, it's a little difficult to read. On the top half, we have two sample bonds that I pulled from the marketable securities that meet the criteria that we have to invest under. And what you'll note is that while both these bonds mature in 2024, therefore within the five years, they are both callable, which is an issue that we will battle constantly in our line of business. And so what happens is, while the top bond pays a coupon of four and a quarter percent and the CalGEO right below it pays a 5% coupon, when you take into account that they can be called, and that's how we purchase them, you'll see, second column from the right, YTW, which stands for yield to worst, you'll see that both of those yields are less than 1%. .95 in the first case, .612 in the second case. And that brings me to the larger issue that we're facing here. I don't know that any of you watch the financial news, but...
Yes.
Since December, interest rates have fallen like a stone, and the Fed has only reduced rates a quarter of a percent last month. So the lower box here shows you a variety of national munis, not California only, but for comparison's sake, two-year AAA, two-year double, two-year single, and so on down the list. And you'll see, I'm going to try and get the pointer to go, there's five-year AAA, point and, I can't even read it myself, and I put it there, point...
Eight nine three.
Nine eight three. So that's, that's the battle we have. We have one security, which is further reduced by the fact that it has to be non-AMT, five-year maximum maturity, and interest rates have gone through the floor again. So this is, this has been our challenge for the last 10 years, and of course, it's a continuing challenge here today. This is certainly something that we can do. I know staff's recommendation was to start with, I believe, $950,000. The next page really shows you the grim details. That page shows you two sample future value calculations. The first, starting at $950,000, and the second at 1.2, using the larger yield to worst from the bonds I showed you, a .95. The $950,000 starting point, you finish at 995 at the end of five years. The $1.2 million starting point, you finish at 1.25 plus. So it's going to be a challenge through this period. I'm not saying it's not doable. What I'm asking you to consider is whether you will be able to add to this or not, because I have no idea, just as I'm sure none of you on the dais or anyone in the audience does, when rates will go up again. When they went down in 2008 to effectively zero, there was concern about inflation and rising rates. Well, it took almost 10 years to get the rates up, and now they're headed back down. So what I wanted you to know is that, that we can do this, but given the present circumstances, my concern is that you may have to add additional funds in order for the investment to reach its goal at the end of 19 years. Are there any specific questions I can answer? Anybody want to talk about municipal finance?
Mayor, council, if I can, just to weigh in on this item tonight, I first want to thank Bill for working with us on this issue. We've also been engaged very closely with bond counsel, Mr. Israel, on coming up with a strategy to address this outstanding fiscal issue. Just want to remind the council that the reason we're bringing this forward is the result of the loss of redevelopment. You know, it's a continued painful outcome associated with the, with the loss of redevelopment. What we're trying to do tonight is to really establish a bond reserve account that will be in place to make the final bond payment in 2038. So what we're talking about is making the final payment 19 years from now. And the reason I bring that up is because it kind of factors into what Mr. Sullivan's asking tonight, is what's the right amount to set aside now to help us generate enough interest income to make that payment in 19 years? And I think, you know, staff took a kind of a modest approach that, you know, we could, we could assume a very conservative interest environment and put, you know, you could almost probably put a majority of the unspent bond proceeds aside and kind of have it sit there, earn very little interest, and we'll be in a position to make the full payment. But we recognize that there is opportunity to earn interest, but there's also kind of value in the remaining unspent bond proceeds and putting it towards a project today, or tomorrow, or in the near future, towards an important project that's going to benefit the community over the next 19 years. One of the things that is pointed out in the presentation tonight is, under the council's investment policy, we really need to take a look at this every five years and reinvest those proceeds. So it's an opportunity for the council, should you go with a lesser amount, to kind of look at that and determine whether you, as, and future councils want to put together, put aside additional revenue, invest additional revenue to make sure we're kind of approaching that target of $1.8 million come, come 2038. So, you know, just trying to lend some perspective for council. If you want to take a very conservative approach, you know, you can put more if you feel like, you know, you want to give it some time. You know, staff's recommendation is to set aside $950,000, but then you're going to kind of need to look at that, and I think Mr. Sullivan's correct, that there may be some need over time to put additional dollars aside in the investment account to make sure that we've got adequate proceeds. What you're really doing tonight is coming up and implementing, helping implement a long-term strategy so that, you know, the future council that's sitting here in 2038 and future staff are in a position, they're going to look back and say, God, that council did a great job. So, you know, I want to applaud the work that, you know, Myers-Nave, our finance director and Exchange Bank have kind of come up with to help address this financial impact that's 19 years out in the future in a prudent financial manner. But I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council may have about this. One of the things that is pointed out in the presentation tonight is, under the council's investment policy, we really need to take a look at this every five years and reinvest those proceeds. So it's an opportunity for the council, should you go with a lesser amount, to kind of look at that and determine whether you, as, and future councils, want to put aside additional revenue, invest additional revenue to make sure we're kind of approaching that target of $1.8 million come 2038. So, you know, just trying to lend some perspective for council. If you want to take a very conservative approach, you know, you can put more if you feel like, you know, you want to give it some time. You know, staff's recommendation is to set aside $950,000, but then you're gonna kind of need to look at that, and I think Mr. Sullivan's correct, that there may be some need over time to put additional dollars aside in the investment account to make sure that we've got adequate proceeds. What you're really doing tonight is coming up and implementing, helping implement a long-term strategy so that, you know, the future council that's sitting here in 2038 and future staff are in a position, they're gonna look back and say, "Yeah, that council did a great job." So, you know, I want to applaud the work that, you know, Myers-Nave, our finance director and Exchange Bank have kind of come up with to help address this financial impact that's 19 years out in the future in a prudent financial manner. But I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council may have about the strategy that we've developed and what we're recommending tonight.
Any questions?
I just have concerns about putting money aside when there are needs in the community. And it is something that definitely needs to be reviewed and discussed, to make sure that pensions are covered, that the needs of the community are covered, but at the same time, that we still make little profits for the city.
Do you want to address that, City Manager, what this funding can be used for? That's a really good question.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the, what staff's proposing is to use unspent bond proceeds, and currently, we have an estimated fund balance of, round numbers, $2.5 million. So, these bond proceeds do come with certain requirements, and of course, the structure that we've presented to you tonight meets those requirements if we set those aside. But otherwise, these funds have to be used for public capital improvements, so they can't be used for ongoing operation and maintenance. It would have to go to a future public improvement, such as, you know, a street project, a parks project, a public facility, such as a police station, or other public improvements. That's one of the very strict guidelines relative to the bond covenants for these proceeds.
All of which we desperately need, except for the fact that the state has called the money back, so, okay. So here we are. Any other questions? Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Suzy?
Yeah, I just want to point out that this took a couple of years to come up with this plan, that it wasn't an easy, like, oh, let's just do this. We, it was a very detailed plan that took a lot of legal counsel, so if we don't do this in 2038, there's gonna be $1.8 million that the general fund is gonna have to come up with.
Yeah, we have to cough the money up in 2038 either way, so how do we plan for that? And so, we have your recommendations here? Okay.
And again, I'd just like to thank Suzy and Mr. Kelly and Perry Israel, who I spoke to about this. My suggestion would be, given the challenges that every city faces, is find an amount to start with, but try to budget looking forward, because we certainly may experience higher interest rates. God knows everybody could benefit from that. But we're looking at a crystal ball, and it's cloudy, and so it's, the best we can do is encourage you to follow the plan and adjust as need be.
Well, since the horse racing season is over, we will take a look at these options. Actually, at this time, I will go ahead and open it up to anyone from the public if you'd like to make a contribution or ask questions, or we'll actually literally make a contribution. That would be great. Would anyone like to come forward from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for deliberation, and I'll be fair and start with my left this time. What are you looking at as your favorite options?
You know, I find myself leaning towards probably making more of a conservative set aside now, and looking at it in five years to see if any of our revenue streams come through, if any annexations that we're trying to work on yield any additional dollars that we could then budget. But from the way I'm hearing it, if we commit 1.2, we can't say, "Oh, I'd like to have some of that back."
Actually, yes, Suzy, can you address that?
Right. If we commit it, it's committed for the five years.
For the five years, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so thank you.
Not really. We have a balance basically of 2.5. We are gonna owe a lot of money, 1.8, in 2038, and the stock market crashed out of the sky today. Bonds are dead in the water practically, so thank you for that, but you're right about that. I don't want to see us set, I guess I would have to go with option number two, which is 1.2, to set aside. That's still not enough to make that payment, but in five years, we can reconsider, but it's just sort of sad that we're really not gonna make very much money on that investment at all. But that's the state of affairs in...
Okay, so we have, just gonna try to keep track here. So Jason, you're leaning toward, sorry.
He was one.
You're one.
I'm one or two, but I'm leaning more towards two.
Okay. We'll say one with a hint. And then, Marta, what are you leaning toward?
I'm leaning towards two also. Is that gonna make Suzy happy?
Any of will make me happy.
Okay. I was leaning toward one, but if we do that, we, I think we would be split, so...
Well, I'm willing to talk about it a little bit more.
You want to talk a little bit more?
I mean, so, one of the things that has me, you know, you brought up expenditures towards parks. There's something on the agenda tonight where we're gonna be asking for a budget amendment. That has me leaning, again, more towards a conservative set aside right now, because we have an immediate need that very well could be amended this very evening. I don't want us to leave undecided, so please, just give me a compelling argument about 1.2 and how there's some security in it, and how five years is not the end of the world, and maybe I can come along with you.
Well, you just said it.
Well, you just said it. You just said it, and that's, and honestly, you just stated why I was leaning toward one, because, again, it's only a five-year period. We, you know, we have to assume, we hope that interest rates are going to go up, and we can, but the more money we commit to it, the less money we have for capital improvements that we could actually use to improve possible economic development and investment in the community. And so that's why I was leaning...
Some of which we have this very evening.
Exactly.
Last time I'll say it, I won't beat a dead horse.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, five years is not a long time.
Five years is not a long time.
I mean, it takes a long time for us to get decisions made, so...
It took, it took three years to come up with this plan, right? No, I think Joanne was working on this.
I'm sure she was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know that she was trying to...
She was trying to get back the...
She was trying to get back some of that money, and it just didn't, it just didn't happen, so, so here we are. Okay. So I guess, you know, short of going to the horse races or going and, you know, betting on red or black, which actually, I think with the interest rates, I think our odds are probably pretty good.
Unless we really tank, which is probably gonna happen.
Unless we really tank, so, yeah, so who's feeling lucky? I can, I can live with two, but I guess I'm leaning toward one, because at least it's putting a chunk aside, but then it gives us the freedom to invest in infrastructure projects in the community. So, but I will want to hear, you know, if people are passionate either way on one or two.
Mayor, if I can, just to offer something up...
Certainly. And of course, the banker and the, you know, the tiebreaker is offstage, so...
Maybe it's a question for Mr. Sullivan. Let's say council opts for option one tonight. The unspent bond proceeds are, you know, we haven't made a decision yet. Could we then, if determining at some point when the council says how they want to utilize those funds, commit additional unspent bond proceeds at a future date to additional, purchase additional municipal bonds to make up that difference? And the reason I suggest that is because it might preserve some flexibility for council and not preclude the opportunity to put more additional bond proceeds into an investment account. Obviously, you're gonna lose that time value of money...
Right.
...if you do that, but...
But we're not losing a lot of, we're not losing a lot of investment interest.
And that was really my point. When we initially talked about the 950, I thought it was low. But the fact of the matter is, a lot can change over time. Every community has needs, and we heard about a little of that tonight. So you have, the one, the one place we do have flexibility is for you to add as we go. And we will be able to see the market change, hopefully not as much as it did today, and...
It was brutal day.
Hopefully, that will be, you know, encouragement to you to move towards that goal, but I can certainly understand why you'd start with a smaller amount tonight, based on what I've heard.
Because we can add to it later, and we're not really losing anything, because we're not going to earn very much interest anyway. Okay.
And we could make this a goal at the next goal-setting workshop? We have annual reviews on it. Sounds like we can commit more money to it at the time that we want.
Does that sound feasible, City Manager?
I think it does. I think it's a prudent approach. I think, because, you know, once you, once you commit the money and you put it in the fund, really at that point, it's a lockbox, shouldn't be taking it out.
But only for five years, a lockbox.
Yeah, for five years.
True, though, you know, we are establishing a reserve account for the purposes of paying off that remaining bond payment. So, I guess, as your City Manager, I look at it as kind of a lockbox, though you should be reviewing that balance to make sure it's targeting where you want it to target, but I wouldn't look at it as an account that you can then draw off of for other projects, because, again, it has that underlying restriction, which is to be used for what the intent of the bond proceeds are.
For the sole purpose, for the sole purpose of making that final bond payment. That's how it's written. So that, and we've worked with Exchange Bank, and they've promised that at five years, they're gonna know that they need to go back in and they need to reinvest the funds that we have into additional bonds. And with this, with, we can only buy specific bonds based, because it's bond proceeds, so, yeah.
I'd like to add to what Suzy was saying, and it's a point I was trying to make earlier, and I probably didn't do a very good job. The vast majority of these bonds have a call feature built into them. So the two bonds I showed you, even though they are five-year bonds, can be called in one or two years. That's why the yield to worst is so low, is because when you're purchasing a bond, you want to know the earliest time that it can be called. You don't care if it goes another year, it's another year worth of interest, your yield is higher, but you want to know what the worst outcome is, so that you can plan appropriately. So, to Suzy's point, five years, absolutely, but we're probably going to be talking about bonds that mature every couple of years, and we'll be looking at what the market brings to us. So keeping in contact is easy, and keeping you apprised of what's going on. Sounds like some of you are watching the markets, and you know what interest rates are doing, which is a good thing. So, yeah.
So do we feel like we have enough information, or do you, did you have a question?
Well, the only thing that, the only reason, and you know I'm usually willing to roll the dice, but in this case, where we're facing that payment, that's $1.8 million, and I know 1038, I mean, I'll probably be long dead and buried then, but the point of it is, is that if the signals that were signaled today stay, we could be headed into a really serious recession in the next few years. And if that happens, we are suddenly then gonna be faced with this bond payment without any security behind it, which is, the 1.2, I can kind of go along with that. That still leaves everybody over $1 million to put into something else, but it gives us a little bit of security there. I hope I'm wrong, and I hope that the markets' signals that are happening now don't lead us into a horrible recession, but we have been there before in this town, and it's been brutal trying to get us back to where we are now. So, I don't know. I'm just being really conservative, and I know everybody out there is thinking, "You", but...
No, but considering what this council had to do, and I was not on it, you were...
I was on it, and it was brutal.
It was horrible. It was horrible, the cuts that had to be made. I mean, it was, it was a really, really dark time in this town. It was almost literally dark, because as I often say, we barely kept the lights on in City Hall.
Barely.
Barely. And so, I, I really hear what you're saying, because it's, that's, you know, that's what we have to be prepared for, and that's what we're, that's what we're asking to, that's what we're asking, we're being asked to decide upon tonight.
That's 1.8 million. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
Especially if things tank. That's all I'm saying.
And it's also a lot of, it's a, it's a partial, you know, it's a, it's a road project or, you know, an infrastructure project that could then expand our tax base. I mean, that's, that's the real issue here, is that how much of it do we, do we feel we have to set aside as a nest egg, and then how much can we invest in the community to hopefully increase our tax base? And this is a very difficult question, so... Jason, you, so going to you, Jason.
I mean, I feel like we're on, I feel like we're on the precipice for variables in our revenue that, you know, I mean, unless I am missing something glaring, I was always kind of taught you want to keep the money in your possession, so you kind of have control over it and move it as, you know, as you see fit, in the increments that you see fit, and...
Or you can kind of...
We can always add more to it. It takes five years to then take it out, so if the market crashes in less than five years and we find ourselves needing that money, you don't get to have it.
We're gonna need it in 2038, a lot.
Yeah. Because we have to pay off that debt.
We have to pay that back.
That bill will be due, and it will have to be paid.
You'll still be alive, so it's gonna be your problem.
Yeah, you'll still be, you're the only one who's still gonna be alive, so, you know, maybe we should just leave this up to you. Well, I kind of look at this also as, you know, when you're, when you're figuring out your, when you're planning for your 401K, and it's different, you plan differently when you're 20 from when you're 50.
Indeed.
And that's kind of what we're looking at tonight, so. So I'll go to the end of the dais now. What are, what are your thoughts?
Well, it's a lot of money to pay back, and I prefer to go with option two.
Okay. It seems like there are two option twos.
Let's put it to bed. It's $350,000. I'll just consider myself, or $250,000, democracy at work. It's no big deal. Let's do it.
Yeah, this is, I'm willing to be flexible on this, I'm not gonna go down in flames. So, I think we have a consensus...
Yeah, this ain't the hill I want to die on.
Exactly. This is not, no, and being, being fiscally conservative, while, you know, unfortunately, it will tie up funds that we could invest in infrastructure projects, as long as everybody understands that, it'll tie up...
I'm very clear on that.
And you're comfortable.
I'm incredibly clear, yes.
Okay, I think we're good. So it looks like we have some consensus around option two. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, if I can, there's a resolution in your packet, and council, staff's recommending that you adopt a resolution identifying the amount that council would like to set aside. There is a, the third whereas in your resolution does identify transferring amount up to 1.2 million. I would recommend if it's, the amount council supports is also referencing that amount in the, now therefore be it resolved, you know, that you open an investment account at Exchange Bank in the amount of $1.2 million for the purposes of making the final RDA payment, so if council supports, again, that amount, that you include that in the now therefore be it resolved. So that way, it's, it's clear, the dollar amount that this council is recommending be set aside to establish that account.
So we'd recommend that resolution as amended, all right?
I'll offer it.
Please do.
City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 732019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, authorizing the City Manager, his designee, to transfer funds from the non-housing unspent bond proceeds and open an investment account at Exchange Bank for the sole purpose of creating a reserve account to make the final City of Cloverdale successor agency bond payment due August 2038. So now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Cloverdale that the City Manager, blah, 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 blah. And then at the end, after purchasing of a five-year non-ATM, AMT bond and/or other tax-exempt funds, using unspent bond proceeds in the amount of 1.2. That it? Is that good?
Is that good? All right, is there a second?
I have a second.
All right.
Okay. Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
And Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
It's all right.
That's okay.
We'll carry right on to the next.
Thank you very much. With, um, Gus, Mayor?
You back there, if you'd like to rejoin us?
Okay. All right, moving on to item 15, and this is a discussion on possible action on the establishment of an ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing and recommending a ban on sale of fireworks.
Mayor? Hello? Mayor, council members. Mayor, council members, Kevin Thompson, Assistant City Manager. City Manager did give a little bit of an introduction on this item during the agenda review. I just want to reemphasize that we're looking to form an ad hoc to discuss possible actions to be taken in terms of fireworks, so there's no conclusion on what those actions are. During the subcommittee, this item was discussed, and the subcommittee's recommendation was to bring forward an ad hoc committee for the, for the review of the fireworks issue. During, during the subcommittee meeting, there were several different ideas brought... issue, during, during the subcommittee meeting, we, there were several different ideas brought up, and it became clear that it would be better handled in an, in an ad hoc setting, so unlike a standing committee of the city council, an ad hoc committee is not required to comply with the Brown Act requirements for meeting, noticing, agendas, and minutes, so our recommendation tonight is that we've, the council by motion formed the ad hoc committee to review the fireworks issue, and we're looking for council interest, not to exceed two council members on the ad hoc committee, that concludes my presentation, I know there's a lot of people here who want, want to speak on this item, and we're here for questions.
Great, thank you, so, any questions from the council members who weren't at the finance subcommittee, or anything for us? Seeing none, all right, well, I'll open it up to the public for comment, so you go ahead and come forward and limit your comments to three minutes, and remember that the topic at hand is the formation of the ad hoc committee on this issue, it's not on pros or cons of fireworks themselves, so please try to stay on the topic, and if you can't, I'll ask you to take your seat, and, and...
Just sign the sheet.
And we remember to sign the sheet for Sue, so that we can get your name right. Right, please state your name for the record.
What's your name? What's your name? All right, I'll go first. My name is Helen Bratton, I live in Cloverdale, I understand it's to form a committee, and I did see it on Nextdoor, and I love fireworks, I think that they are something that makes Cloverdale unique, my family loves them, we love to ride our bikes around town and see all the other families enjoying them, we love to go to the high school football field and watch them going on around the track, I understand there are some people who think we should be like everybody else, and want to ban them, so I would like to ask to have a weighted committee, I know it's not a jury, you can't get unbiased people, people are leaning one way or the other, but to have a balance of people who are pro-firework, you know, keep it the same, I love it, I love to see the Lions Club here, we love the show, and, along with people who want to do something else.
So, the ad hoc committee will consist of probably two council members?
And is, are they gonna have community members on it?
The community members are welcome to then come to the, to the, to the meetings.
So, I don't have time, but if you need somebody who loves the fireworks, I will volunteer to be on the committee, if you need somebody who loves the fireworks, and if you need to have a committee, if you don't, hey, that's great, saves me a lot of time.
Great, thank you.
What's your name?
Robert Bratton.
Where do you live? Where do you live?
There we go, thank you.
I love fireworks.
There we go, thank you. So, would anyone else like to come forward, and please state your name for the record, and be sure to fill out Sue's form, or incur her wrath.
Thank you, Sally, Sally Evans, and I'm a resident of Cloverdale, and I love fireworks too, but my comments are with regard to the personal use and sale, we do need a committee to rationally talk about this issue, things change, and the new normal is the threat of fire every month of the year in our fire-prone area, particularly the summer, we need to get out in front of this very real threat before we experience disaster here as a result of our inaction, we came close to experiencing an all-consuming Cloverdale fire two years ago, I for one watched anxiously as the smoke rose over the mountain closer and closer to our community before the wind changed and spared us, unlike some Santa Rosa communities like Coffee Park, let's work together to eliminate this potential threat to all of us, the greater good must be our focus, it's only reasonable to want to protect our community from any threat of fire, and fireworks is a real one.
Okay, you know what, can we, can we, we're gonna, we're gonna hold our applause for everyone except for toddlers, okay, can we, everybody agree to do that? Thank you, so, yeah, please come down and state your name for the record, and be sure to fill out Sue's form.
Okay, I'd like to introduce myself, I'm known as Tex Dickens here in Cloverdale, my official name is George, and I'm in my 60th year as a resident of Cloverdale, and I have to be honest with you, I spent 30 of those years working for the school district, and I would rather have stand in front of those 1,500 kids I did every year, instead of in front of you, so you're a little more intimidating, 1,500 children, first of all, I'd like to, to tell you that we, we do respect everyone in Cloverdale's opinions, and we will work with you and the city, as we have in the past, would just like to point out that the public sales of fireworks accounts about one quarter of our annual budget, which is over $100,000, which is not bad for a service group trying to raise money to give back to the community, and from this point, I've got a cheat, for all, all the fears of the fires, we, we totally understand that, we, we live with it every day, however, we in Cloverdale have had no fires from ill, from illegal fireworks, they've been illegal fireworks that start the fires, this is approved by their, or came to us by the local fire department, we also have agreed to every recommendation that the city has come up with in regards to banning certain fireworks, such as the ground bloom flowers, the piccolo peats, and the sparklers, we've also reduced the sales from seven days to four days, we've reduced the time that they're legal to be set off, only on the 4th of July, and I'm sure that if you drive around Cloverdale, you're gonna find fireworks going off before the 4th of July, but that's human nature, we have assisted with the city in monitoring the use of illegal fireworks, I personally filed charges against one person about three years ago, and that guy got fined $1,000, and I'm not afraid to do it again, I would do it again, what I would like to do is for you to consider, instead of a total ban on the fireworks...
Well, Mr. Dickens, again, the topic is whether or not to form the ad hoc.
I'm sorry?
The, the topic is whether or not to form the ad hoc.
Okay.
That's, so, so we're not discussing pros or cons or anything today?
Okay, we won't talk about that, then, anyway, the Cloverdale Lions Club appreciates any support we get from you folks, and hope everything goes well with you, thank you.
Thank you, all right, would anyone else like to come forward?
Sorry, long name, okay, my name is John Burglars.
You know, no, we're gonna, you're fine, John, no, we're, the monitor, we can't see you.
My wife's got me trained.
Yeah, we could just move it aside, right, thank you, no, we want to be able to see you, sorry, that's getting in the way.
Okay, so, so we, again, we all came prepared to, to state our, our side on, on the fireworks, because as of me, two days ago, I just found out on, on the internet, hey, they're wanting to stop the fireworks in there.
So, again, I'm gonna, I've said this in the council meeting, don't believe everything you read on social media, because that's not what this topic is about, this is about whether or not we're going to form the ad hoc, about whether or not we're gonna discuss it.
So, why are we, okay, my point is, is why are we forming it?
Okay.
Why, why do we, why do we need a committee?
So, I can answer that really quickly, we, a group of citizens got together, formed, actually, I believe, signed a petition and brought it to the, brought it to my attention, and we put it on the subcommittee meeting, and it was, it was standing room only in the police finance and administration subcommittee meeting, and so, because there was such a strong response, we decided to go ahead and put it on, send it to the council, and let the council decide if they wanted to form an ad hoc, to just, to, to look into this further, so that, so hopefully that answers your question.
Well, that answers my question, that, that we were totally blindsided as far as, as far as having our opinion being brought up, this committee come in and said, hey, we want to put this on the agenda and get it done, so, like I said...
Well, you'll have, you'll be noticed when, if, if we move forward with it tonight, you will be noticed and be able to participate fully, so there was no blindsiding and no, you know, intentional leaving people in the dark, I don't know what was, I'd actually, I went on vacation, thank God, I didn't see what was going on on social media.
Well, so did.
Yeah, great.
So, yeah, I came back yesterday, and they're saying, hey, get your act together, because they're, they're going after us again, and basically, I noticed, there's only two faces up here...
So, who, sorry, who's, who's going after you?
Uh, the, this committee that wants to stop.
There's the committee that hasn't been formed yet?
There hasn't been formed yet.
Okay, gotcha, I just want to, I'm sure I was following along correctly, okay, go ahead.
Uh, so, I'm looking here, I've been here for 71 years, and I'm looking here, and I see two people on the, on the committee out here that I, on, excuse me, on the council that I recognized in there, this is like the third time we've come up on this, and, and like Tex said, every time, we've, we've agreed to do everything we could and, and get it going, it's, it's a heritage, it's, it's something we want to see carried on to our grandchildren and stuff, I don't want my grandchild to go say, okay, hey, it's time, we're going from the TV, and we're gonna watch the, we're gonna watch the fireworks, because it's the 4th of July, so, I, I want to be more informed as when there's a committee, and, oh yeah, 71 years, I've never been asked my opinion on nothing, so, this committee that's out there, how do, how do you...
There's no committee yet, we're gonna vote on that later.
Okay, you're gonna vote on that later, if there is one.
Oh, are you referring to the finance committee?
No, no, I'm referring to the, the, what'd you call it?
The ad hoc?
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't exist yet, okay, gotcha, okay.
So, so, how do you get to give your opinion, I mean, I, I've never seen anything like, uh, uh, sign, sign here if you're for it, sign here if you're against it, which I thought would be great, to give you guys an idea, well, you've got an idea behind me as to how many people are for it, I'm, at that, I'm gonna quit, I know it's your guys' decision in there, but, yeah, I'd like to really see it continue.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I'm with the Veterans of Foreign War, the Lions Club has one booth, we have the little small one down the other end of town, and it is our total finances for operating for a full year.
So, and actually, I had a question for you and Tex, you said that it accounts for about a quarter of your income, and is, and then you said 100,000, so is it, so could you clarify, is it a quarter of the 1,000 of your total fundraisers, sorry, can you come back down, because I, yeah, I had a question about that.
I know.
Just to clarify, the quarter is one quarter of 100,000 dollars, about, we, we bring in about 25,000 dollars on our fireworks.
Thank you, so a quarter of it is of your 100,000, so 25,000 of your 100,000 dollar fundraising is from fireworks, so 25, that, you raised 25,000 dollars from fireworks, and then an additional 75,000 from other fundraisers?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, that comes from other events that we do, as well as other fundraisers that we do.
Great, thank you, yeah, sorry, I didn't, I don't think I heard that correctly, so, thank you.
And, and ours is about 9,000, they, they sell like three times as much as we do.
Okay, great.
But, in all fairness, 71, I'm the youngest guy in the group.
Great, would anyone else like to come forward at this time?
Hello, my name is Dale Winifred, live here in Cloverdale, I took both my BMW and my Lions off, because I belong to both clubs, but I only represent myself and it's my own opinion, I hear that you're talking about an ad hoc to decide about the fireworks, so I want to talk about the positives and not the negatives, when you hear people talk about the negatives, you hear them talk about the noise and the traffic.
And again, tonight, we're not really talking about fireworks or not fireworks, we're talking about whether or not to form a committee to further investigate the subject.
And that's true, and so I'd like to talk about the positives before we do the vote, so that people can hear...
We're not, oh, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
The positives of the whole thing, you hear about people say, oh, the noise, which is what I'm assuming the ad hoc was about, but the positives, you had this little child, kid here earlier, the first person that was here that said they liked the fireworks, well, I remember when I first went up to the high school, and I had a box of sparklers with my daughter, and that gave me an opportunity to explain to her how to safely use fireworks, how to be a member of the community, because she got to help clean up afterwards, she got to help get money for the fireworks, and I thought that was very important, and if we lose that community teaching event, I honestly think, where are the kids gonna go to learn how to be a community member, and by the way, I wanted to give a quick shout out to Lion Chuck Seabert, who recently passed, and he was the big reason why it was such a safe event up there, so anyway, thank you again.
Okay, okay, again, again, we're saving our applause for toddlers only, thank you very much, all right, would anyone else like to come forward and speak on this topic? And again, we're discussing whether or not to form the ad hoc, we're not given testimony about pros and cons this evening.
I just want to say, my name is Janet Seaforth, and Cloverdale resident, and, for a long time, and I just wanted to say thank you for considering this, because it is an important issue, and I love fireworks, and the last time I went to the field with my grandkids, my blanket got burnt from embers falling, and I, you know, so, I mean, it does happen, you know, and I just think we need to have the courage to, you know, see other possibilities, because we are in such a big fire danger now, so I really appreciate you considering possibly changing, I would love to celebrate the birth of our nation in another way, I mean, picnics at the park, and apple pie, I don't know, God bless America, you know, would love that, so thank you so much for this consideration.
Thank you, okay, would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Thank you for filling out your name, we appreciate it, don't we, Sue?
Good evening, Mayor Bagby, and members of the council, my name is Dennis Revelle, it's my pleasure and honor to be here this evening on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks, you've, all of you have heard from me at least three times, two times most recently in the last couple of days on the subject, as well as, at the 4th of July, just prior to the 4th of July, you received the public education plan that we implemented in this community, including the statewide fireworks safety and education program, the schools, the cable, television time that we bought for the state fire marshals, PSA, and other activities that we did, as I indicated to you in my recent correspondence, it's my responsibility to represent TNT Fireworks, and in that capacity, we do so in assisting both state and local communities with the collection and tabulation of fire and injury data, as well as act as a resource library, and, and on several aspects of fireworks, including the emerging enforcement techniques such as administrative fines, social host ordinance, cost recovery ordinance, the nail smartphone reporting app, and drone programs, and task force, in fairness to the community members here this evening, as well as staff in this council, I think some of the confusion about the purpose of this evening was the distinction between the limitation of what there is in terms of an agenda title versus what the staff report actually says the motion is gonna be, the agenda item refers to banning the sale and use of fireworks, whereas the actual recommended council action sets for the purpose of reviewing and making regulations, or, excuse me, recommendations relating to the city's existing... relating to the city's existing municipal code for the sale of sane and sane and sane fireworks. So clearly, in keeping with that expanded resolution language, as opposed to the limitation of the agenda title, I think we're all in agreement that should the council decide to move forward with an ad hoc committee, we would respectfully request, one, that the committee examine and discuss and consider the ordinance changes outlined in the California League of Cities material, which we shared with you. Number two, that while the ad hoc committee does not have to comply with the Brown Act, at a minimum, the committee's meeting should be noticed and open to the public and their participation in it. And number three, that as has happened in each of the prior instances in this community where we've had an ad hoc committee on this subject, that the committee take advantage of the pro bono resource library that we can provide and the, and the experience that we have provided around the state to other communities. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for, you have any questions? Okay, great, thank you.
My name is Ray Pashi, Cloverdale resident for 30 years. I suffer from anxiety and stage fright, so this is not easy for me to do. I would like you to know, I live in the cul-de-sac back up to Wildlands, and I'm terrified of fires. I had my bags packed, my kids had their bags packed. My daughter Natalie worked up at the Cloverdale Health Center, and she was up there, take, you know, we were all afraid. There's no bullshit about fires, we hate them. I just don't think that this committee should be formed, I think it's a waste of time. I hope that you'll consider what I have to say. You know, I know there's no committee formed yet, but I think if we do, if you do form one, that Cloverdale Lions should be on it as well. And as far as the petition goes that these guys got signed, I didn't know anything about it, but I'm pretty sure that if we signed, put a petition out, there would be an awful lot of signatures that would be against the committee. Thank you.
Gee, this is where the rubber meets the road, I gotta say. My name is Richard Green, I'm a Cloverdale resident for 35 years. And I was at the meeting that generated the necessity to have this be on the agenda for this evening. And because I was at that meeting and because of the varying expressions of pro and con, it was clear when you were discussing the need for a subcommittee that there needed to be one. So I please support your efforts to bring this to a little conclusion. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to come forward at this time?
That'll, that'll bring the meeting to a crashing halt. There we go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, chief, thank you for your time. Madam Mayor, specific to your question, no. This ad hoc has been established previous. I'd like to, I'd like to very much express my appreciation to the gentleman from TNT. I, I think that is by far more than anything my reason for saying no. An ad hoc is not necessary. He can provide statistical facts of exactly what fireworks are responsible in respect to danger, in respect to loss of limb and loss of life. I, I very much respect the opinion of everybody in the community. As a lot of folks have said, yes, fire danger is real. However, by this reasoning, that we ban them or start a committee to even discuss the topic, which we have a lot of committees already talking about an awful lot of important things that need to be done in Cloverdale. I don't know if we've got the resources or the time to talk about something we have talked about year after year after year. And ultimately, the facts remain the same. These safe and sane fireworks are not responsible for the Tubbs Fire, the Paradise Fire, or any of those fires that we are so terrified may come to our community. So no, I don't believe an ad hoc is necessary. I think it's, and I do think that where there's an appropriate time, subcommittees for the public to come and share their fear and their opinion, I think that's warranted. But to establish a committee that effectively will be a lot of personal opinion in contrast to the facts. I look forward to seeing maybe Fire Chief Jenkins here tonight, or, but it sounds like Tex has already got those facts. What is the basis, other than fear, to establish an ad hoc to discuss the same topic that we've discussed multiple times and nothing has changed? The last concern that I have is if you, you limit the average adult's opportunity to enjoy themselves, what will they do then? I don't know if any of you are familiar with them, illegal fireworks and the danger that they represent, and what may potentially come to be if we outlaw everything. Well, there may be a lot of folks that decide, well, just go get some illegal stuff. And then we have law enforcement that's addressing not only safe and sane things that are being brought into our community, but the illegal ones as well. So it just seems a little heavy-handed, for no real reason. I just don't see, yeah, the, the facts stacking up to the fear. So thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? All right, well, one more chance. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for deliberations. Do you have, I'll start to my left, are there any?
Started this way last time, started on that end.
Oh, you're right, thank you. All right, I'll start over here. Okay, Councilmember Brigham just put you guys on the hot seat, so. Who would like to begin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll go first. Dennis, I want to thank you for coming back again. I, I believe you and I had the opportunity to meet about eight or nine years ago, when former councilmember Joe Pollard and I served on an ad hoc committee. And you were kind enough to come up a couple of times and address us, as well as the full city council. So I appreciate that. Going back, the ordinance that the city has in place now, I, I think was a very thoughtful one that was crafted by, again, councilmember Pollard and myself. And we've limited the sales from the First of July to the Fourth. They can only be ignited on the Fourth, and I think that might be from 5:00 till 11:00 PM, but I'm not too sure on that. So, you know, at this point in time, I, I hear everyone's concerns about fire, I have the same concerns, there's no doubt about it. I agree with, with Sean, doing away with the safe and sane will only bring out the illegals, which are far more threat to our community than the safe and sane. And again, it always drives back to the parents supervising the kids, the youngsters. And, and I just, at this point, do not think we need an ad hoc. And that's my opinion.
If we don't need an ad, oh, sorry. If we don't need an ad hoc, then would this be back to council, Madam Mayor?
Actually, so this item could just come directly back to council, could it not? Do you want to address that? Okay.
Happy to. Mayor, councilmembers, in terms of deliberation on this item, there, there's a number of options that the council can consider. Council could direct this matter back to the finance, admin, and police subcommittee, which was the recommending body to bring this forward tonight. Another option is to continue deliberations at the, at a council meeting. And the option that's here tonight for you is to consider establishment of an ad hoc. I think just, without trying to support that concept necessarily, I do want to speak to that issue. I think there was, there was quite a bit of deliberation at the finance, admin, and police subcommittee. This, this council has had a history of recommending establishment of ad hocs whenever there are matters of concern that require or the council desires considerable public input on. And as you know, it's, it's, it's very difficult when there are matters of urgency to dedicate time to one topic at a subcommittee meeting, which can take, you know, several hours and require, you know, quite a bit of work. So I think the desire was to recommend establishment of an ad hoc to facilitate additional communication around this topic and address some of the concerns. But council does always reserve the right to keep that issue at, at this level. And it just, as, as you know, as you can see tonight, there's a lot of perspectives on this issue, and it takes, takes time. So it would be a matter of whether council wants to allow for further debate and deliberation and really take a lot of input and community discussion. I think ad hoc is probably the appropriate venue for that. If it's really, you, you want to keep that policy discussion at your level, we can continue to agendize it as you see fit on the city council's agenda. But be mindful that it does take important time away from other business matters.
Well, I think what we really need to address here, if people don't want to have an ad hoc committee, is if we are going to modify the current policy that has been established.
Great. So do you have any thoughts, Addison?
I, I cannot be on, I cannot commit to joining this ad hoc committee, although should the council choose to have one. I, I think everybody in this room, especially the individuals who made a comment that speaking publicly is uncomfortable, the ad hoc committee will give you the opportunity to not have to do that. And you can share your piece in the way, in the means that you see fit. So I would like to just offer that.
Okay, what are your thoughts?
We've gone over this and over this and over this so many times since I've been sitting here. I will, personally, I have no desire to sit on the ad hoc committee this time, I have way in the past. I'm, if you guys want to set up an ad hoc committee, fine, but the ordinance that we have now certainly cleaned up tar and track, and I live down there, and the illegal fireworks that were set off down there were pretty impressive, but scared the hell out of me. And so since we have the new ordinance in place, it's been there for a while now, the safe and sane stuff doesn't bother me at all. I still pay attention, I'm still outside because I have pine trees and, so I do pay attention to that. But I, I am not going to personally sit on an ad hoc committee on this issue ever again in my life.
Fair enough. Okay. Right. Well, it, it comes down to me. So, yeah, this was brought by citizens of Cloverdale, and a fair number of them who had varying levels of opinions about what they wanted to see. And I believe that they deserve to have a hearing. They deserve to have their case heard. So can I ask the vice mayor, and maybe city manager will know, when was the, what year was the last revision to the ordinance? Was it seven or eight years ago? I don't remember if that was in the staff report.
I think we, I think we had just started to have our meetings here in this building. Up until then, we were meeting back at the-
Yeah, I think it was about, it was about eight years ago.
About eight years ago.
Something like that, because we had the issue with the aerials, you know, getting rid of everything aerial. So the safe and sane had to be a certain way.
So 2010, 2011, something like that?
I'd say something like that.
Okay. So it's been nine years, it probably feels like yesterday, based on what it sounds like it was like, but, okay, so. But, you know, the, the reason that we brought it to the council for consideration is that there was a, a pretty significant number of people who have sincere concerns. And considering that it's, you know, post 2017 and post 2018 fires, I think this is a good time to revisit it. So I would be in favor of forming an ad hoc if there's support amongst the council, so that we can just get some more information and so that it's democratic and everybody gets a chance, gets a chance to be heard about this. Because I think that the circumstances have changed, especially in light of climate change, wildfire is just a greater risk, it's just not the same as it was 10, 15, 20 years ago. So it's something that, especially in light of the fact that later on tonight, we will be looking at the local hazard mitigation and disaster preparedness plans. How can we not revisit fireworks at this time, since we're also working on those two projects? So I think it's a, it's a good time to revisit it. So if someone, if a council member would like to make a motion-
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we do not form an ad hoc committee to review the safe and sane firework issue again in the city of Cloverdale.
And is there a second? And is there an alternate motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, which is second, is there an alternate motion?
Well, given that this is all due diligence and an opportunity for every member of the community who wants to be heard to be heard, I would go ahead and revisit the possibility of do establishing an ad hoc committee. Because I do feel that there are many people who want to be heard, and many individuals that obviously do not know how the city government works and how many opportunities there are for citizens to be heard. And that's why there are subcommittees in different areas of governance.
That's sort of a motion. Is there a second?
Who's, who would be on it?
Madam Mayor, I, I think there's a motion on the floor already.
There's a motion on the floor. Actually-
I don't know why you're entertaining a second.
All right, well, let's, city, city attorneys, should we go ahead and, and take, take a vote on the, the first motion on the floor?
Yes, since there's, there's a motion and a second mayor, mayor on the floor, that normally is, is what happens unless there's a motion to amend, and then you're voting on a motion to amend the motion-
Right, so there was no substitute, and there's no substitute motion.
Which starts getting a little complicated, but there is a motion and a second.
All right, well, there is a motion and a second on the floor. May we have a roll call, please?
Wait, I need clarification.
So there is a, a motion to not form, and to not form an ad hoc and a second. A motion made by vice mayor and seconded by councilmember Brigham. So we are going to vote on not forming an ad hoc.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
I gotta explain this for a second. Listen, I-
No, actually, we just need a vote right now.
No, no, I, I am given the opportunity to explain my vote, right?
Certainly.
I, I want to ensure that we follow the due diligence on this process. If we just say, no, we're not going to talk about this any further-
No, we're right now that we're considering whether or not to-
I, I understand.
No, you're not, no, no, right now, we are considering whether or not to form an ad hoc. There are then other options that we can explore. There is a motion and we need to vote on it. So the motion right now is whether or not to not form an ad hoc, and you need to vote. Okay.
Councilmember Walter?
You want to vote aye?
I want to, I want to vote aye. I, I, wait, you see, yeah, I do not want to form the ad hoc committee, so that's an aye.
I have to think about it now again, too. See, I just explained it to you, and then that's where I lost it.
It's aye you want to vote.
I want to vote, okay.
You want to vote aye?
I figured you would say something like that, no.
So the motion failed.
No, I think, believe you need, did you ask councilmember Cruz how-
Yes.
Sorry, I missed that.
I said yes.
Okay, good, there we go. And can you read that back for us?
Sure.
Because I'm confused.
The motion against establishing an ad hoc committee, the vote was councilmember Brigham, yes, and vice mayor Walter, yes, and councilmembers Cruz, Turner, and Mayor Bagby, no.
Okay. So with that, can we actually, don't we have to make a motion to form the ad hoc?
So now you could take your-
Yes, thank you.
Now you could take your other motion.
Okay. So we actually have, so can we, can we use the existing motion on, as stated, as on the floor?
And just, just for the record, the motion would be to form the ad hoc. Would that motion also have the names, or would you, mayor, would you like to just have the motion to form an ad hoc, and then the next decision would be who is going to sit on that ad hoc?
Okay.
Or would you like to do it all under one motion?
Well, I think, would you like to do it all under one motion?
Great idea.
Great idea, okay. Well, then I will- Well, then I will, since we've heard from members of the council already, it looks like it's going to fall to me and someone else, so councilmember Cruz.
Could I, could I nominate somebody for this ad hoc?
Sure.
I would like to nominate our mayor, Melanie, and Marta, the council member, to be the, on the ad hoc committee for fireworks.
Okay. Great. Is there a second? Please, no.
No toddlers here.
No toddlers. Thank you. Is there a second?
Can I second?
Sure.
I second.
You can second yourself, certainly. All right. So we have a motion and a second, and may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
And councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
No.
Vice mayor Walter, excuse me, no. And Mayor Begbie?
Aye.
So I want to be really clear. So you guys are going to have the ad hoc committee, then you're going to come back and we'll have another vote on the dais about the whole thing.
On the findings, absolutely.
Okeydoke.
And I think, you know, in the spirit of what happened at the, the police finance and administration, we were taking all ideas and then we realized this is not something that we can continue with. We need to have, we need to form an ad hoc and get further input from the public, and that's what we intend to do.
Yeah. And the information that comes back, it is my opinion, really needs to have both sides. I think the community made that very clear and city staff acknowledged that it wasn't meant to be leaned one way or the other when the, when the report was written.
And I take issue with that characterization because it, while it would be very simple to say that there are two sides to this, there were subtleties and requests in the room at the time, even by the people who were bringing their concerns. So let's try to keep our, our, let's try to keep an open mind and that this is not diametrically opposed sides. This is the community coming together and giving their input on the different, different shades that they want to see. And that's what this ad hoc, I hope, will be able to, will be able to do.
Madam Mayor, if I could, two things. I'd really like to see us publicize the ad hoc meeting dates.
Without question.
Yeah.
Without question.
Both sides have to know when the meeting is. Secondly.
There are, again, I would, I would urge the council to, to not define this as two sides, because this is not two sides. There are varying degrees of opinions, as there were in the subcommittee meeting.
You're probably right, but it's going to come down to yes or no. But I'd also like to make sure that the fire district, Cloverdale Fire District, is given an invitation to attend. In the past, they've backed off and said, whatever you guys want to do, we'll support it. That's not an opinion that I want from our fire district. And if you folks out there who are dead set against any more fireworks in Cloverdale, please, go to a fire district meeting of the board and tell them you want an opinion from them on their, how they come down on the fireworks issue. But again, if we could publicize it so everyone knows and everybody who's in favor, Ray, Sean, Tex, make sure you come to the meetings. John, you have plenty of time to come to meetings. So let's just, let's just all get there.
And by that, by that token, the, the members of the fire board should also be invited to attend, not just staff. So let's make sure that they are specifically invited because this, they have skin in the game, too. So, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I really want to invite the public and all of Cloverdale to access the website for the city. It publicizes religiously. When the council meets, when the subcommittees meet, who is in each committee and who are the chairpersons of the subcommittees where community issues are discussed and then forwarded and recommended either to the planning commission or to the city council. And we all campaigned in November for the positions that we hold. There was plenty of interviews, there were two forums. So if you are a concern and if you are an engaged citizen, you ought to attend city council meetings when there are other issues that not necessarily affect you. Because the governance of this town is based on the confidence that people voted us on. And it is our responsibility, our civic duty, to be informed and to participate, because that's what democracy is all about. Thank you.
All right, all right.
I'm not a toddler.
No applause. We only applaud toddlers in this, or actors and singers, correct?
Comedians.
And comedians in this building. That's right. All right. Now that we have beaten that horse to death, we are going to move on to.
Should we take a break?
I don't, we are going to move on to a short break. Thank you very much. And we will come back in two minutes.
I would like to take it up from here. Please, let me speak for one minute before everybody leaves. What I just saw here, and maybe I'm looking at things wrong, but I just saw the city council decide not to do it, and she turns around and does another something up there. Is your name, last name Trump or what? I don't understand what's going on here. You guys recommended it, but now, now all of a sudden you're going to have it anyway? And, and. That's a very, yeah. Why, what, I don't understand what you're doing.
She's having a row.
Why don't you come up ahead?
Not to do it. And maybe.
John? I might have missed our point on there.
Oh, okay.
I'll try to start going tomorrow.
You can put, I've got the fire strike right here if you want.
I'll see if I can get.
Exactly. I mean, you knew. No. Okay. Okay. Maybe, maybe.
I think I was in the month.
They're rockers.
Yeah.
We should, we should, well, we can.
Yeah.
Right now.
And that's true. And my, my. I'm. 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 Okay. I'm. 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 I know it. It's fine. I've met him like 12 times and he's like.
Sure if you care.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all good. It's not like it's.
You go talk to him. So she'll straighten him out, yeah.
He was nice enough because I was excited. I don't see anything else happening.
Nope. Okay. I have 16. Are we on 16? All right. So are we all set?
Yep.
Everybody happy? Okay. I call the meeting back to order and we're going to move on to item 16, appointment of members of the community advisory group as recommended by the homeless strategic plan framework. I bet that is Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, mayor, is this, is this working? Mayor, council members, this item is a continued discussion of our community advisory committee for homelessness. And back in May of this year, the city council adopted a resolution establishing the homeless advisory committee, directed staff to return with some potential names of people who might want to sit on the committee. So rather than bringing potential names, we brought, we identified all the groups that have expressed interest. And it'll be our, our thought that we could count on those groups to appoint someone from those groups to a main person and, and an alternate. So we, in the staff report, we've identified all the different groups. Our goal, so the goal of the committee really is to implement the homeless draft, the draft strategic homeless plan. The plan does outline what the first three meetings could look like, so we have kind of a thumbnail sketch of what those meetings would be. We'll probably deviate a little bit, knowing what we know about the situation in Cloverdale. So once we, if this is approved tonight, we'll set up the first meeting, we'll contact all the groups listed in the staff report, give them a little bit of time to identify who they want as the main person and the alternate, and then work forward to getting an agenda set forward. So our recommendation tonight is to approve by motion the members from each group listed on the staff report to form the community advisory group to look at homelessness in Cloverdale.
All right. Great, thank you. All right, any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, I'll have the vice mayor first.
Kevin, there's two organizations that are missing.
Okay.
Cloverdale School District, I'm not seeing.
Okay.
And I'm not seeing the Cloverdale Fire District. I just think, especially the school district, this is something that we talk about at our school, city subcommittee meeting once in a while, is the number of homeless children that they have. And the fire district, we just, we just got to start getting them more involved with some of the issues here in town.
Certainly, I'll reach out to them.
Oh.
Okay. Sorry about that. We, we just need to get the fire district a little more involved in some of these issues.
Definitely.
Makes me wonder, in that same breath, if there'd be value added from a planning commissioner as well. What do you guys think? I mean, they, they do see ordinances. If any ordinance was, came as a recommendation, they would see those first.
That's part of the city.
Okay.
What about the sheriff's department? Because they, they share the responsibility.
Mr. Thompson? You're suggesting the sheriff's department as a possible member, but I don't know if they would, it's appropriate to put them on the City of Cloverdale's committee?
I don't think so. We're talking about Cloverdale here, we're not talking about the county.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we kind of envision these meetings to be open to the public so that other people who may not necessarily be on the committee can participate in that way. The resolution that we adopted in May said 12 members. I'm sure we could amend that, but at this point, it says 12, so I think we, you know, that's, that's a lot of members and we're anticipating a lot of public input from citizens and other concerned citizens who will just participate in the meeting but not be necessarily on the committee.
Yeah, and these are, these are the nine that have already expressed interest, but not necessar, they're not necessarily all the ones that should be on. Is that what you had a concern about, Gus, is that we need to reach out to them and make sure that.
Yes.
We get participation? Okay. Okay.
At least from those two agencies.
Okay, great. Any other questions or clarification points? Marta, did you have anything else? Okay. Did you have anything else? Just for questions for Kevin or?
Nope.
additions? Jason?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, I will open it up to the public when anyone would like to come forward and comment on this item. Alright, well, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. Alright, no more, no more, you know, what is this, like, American Sign Language going on up here on the council desk?
I do have, I do have one question about the city council, is there gonna be one or two members from our group?
It's, I think it says up to two, if you, if there's interest for two. If there's interest for one, that's fine too. I mean, we, we have that 12 cap. So, you know, I, the, the groups listed in the staff report expressed interest a few months ago, so I need to sort of circle back with them and make sure that they're actually want to participate, you know, in the level that we're expecting that this committee will, will ask of them. So, the answer is there could be two.
You're just looking for direction as the, the, the status of the current plan and if we want to move forward with that? Is that, that's the question tonight?
Well, the, it's a motion to, let's see, to form the group using the list provided in the staff report. I guess as amended to include the school district and the Fire District.
Okay. Did you have anything else? So we're, we're happy with it as it is? Would someone like to recommend it?
I'll move. I'll read the resolution by title only. But, you know, before I do that.
It's just a motion.
It's just a motion. It's just a motion.
So just, logistically, the, the council already adopted the resolution that's attached in the packet, Vice Mayor, so the resolution itself already formed the committee and the thought was that the members themselves, it states that the CAG shall consist of up to 12 members, membership will be, will be appointed with city council approval. At this, this is the, the action, appointing the, the members. And I think that the, obviously, the recommendation by staff is, instead of appointing the specific names, appointing the organizations where the members are gonna come from, and that's, that, and that would be done by motion.
Thank you, Jose. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that a member from each of the listed, plus the amended two, community advisory group be submitted.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
And I would like to make one comment, now that it's passed. I do have an interest in this. I've been pretty involved for a very long time, and I certainly got some opinions about it.
And remind us how many subcommittees you're on right now?
I know, you took them all away.
Oh, okay, I think that's.
Yep. So I wouldn't mind, don't touch me, sorry. So I would be happy to be honest.
And, and so we can have a maximum of two, three would create a quorum, so, is anyone else interested in serving on the homelessness task force?
I would be happy to be an alternate.
Okay. That's probably a good plan, just in case something comes up.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be behind it with you.
You wanna be the second and you wanna be, and you wanna be the, the alternate, if, if one of them can't show up?
Well, we can show up and speak.
Yes. Okay. Alright, do we, do we kind of have that, Kevin?
We do.
Okay, great. And Jose has a, has a wrinkle for us, so.
So, so again, just, just the, the actual groups, how many groups did we have?
It's 11.
We ended up 11. I know that the resolution.
And then, so there's one more, you know.
One more slot.
Slot.
And that's the, the council was deciding whether, with what council member, what one council member would be on there officially?
I thought it was organizations, not people.
I thought that it was up to 12 members.
I think that, that is true.
Yeah, it's 12 groups. That's how I read it. Are we wrong, Jose?
No, it's, it's the resolution itself, the CAG shall consist of up to 12 members, membership will be appointed by the, by, with city council approval. And at this meeting, we're talking about the approval itself. Again, I think now we have really 11 members with the, with the groups that the council just, just appointed. We have 11 groups that Kevin will be reaching out to get a representative from each one of those groups. That leaves the, the one slot pursuant to your resolution of up to 12 members.
Okay, so we could have two.
You could have two councilmembers.
Correct.
To make that 12.
Exactly.
If you have one representative from each group.
Exactly.
So 11, plus one more councilmember.
One more councilmember.
And the public will be allowed to come to this, so.
It is a Brown Act, and it is a Brown Act commission.
Could it be, could it be interpreted that there are 12 votes, but multiple attendees? Is, because I'm, if, if it's a, if it's a Brown Act, well, if it's a Brown Act meeting, it, what, well, what are the rules that are gonna, going to govern the meeting?
Great question. So because it's a Brown Act meeting, it will be noticed, just like any other meeting, special meetings, within 24 hours in advance, noticing. It will be open to the public. You would have your membership, in this case, right now with the council voter on 11, it was like 11 members, one from every group. It'd be 11 members, and I'm sure that this is gonna be more of a discussion. I don't know how many votes we'll, we'll be having, but it's, it's something to bring back, right? It's something that's to have a lot of organized discussion, potentially voting, but it'll be open to the public. As far as the council, whenever you have a Brown Act meeting, the only question becomes, well, can all the council go to, to one of these meetings? And the, the, if, my only suggestion is, if the council wants to attend meetings, we actually notice them as a joint special meeting of the city council and your, your, your CAG committee in order for the, all the councils to be able to attend, or else you can't.
Right.
And if you attend, you just can't say.
And that is the plan, is so that we can all attend if we want to. But there, whoever is the, so if, if Councilmember Brigham is in attendance, she's the voting member?
That, that definitely works.
Okay.
Who's chair is these?
Yeah, and then, and then who, and then, what rules are gonna govern these? So are we using Robert's rules and is there gonna be a chair?
Usually, usually there is a chair. Usually when, when the first meeting, when the first meeting of the, of the new committee happens, a lot of times, that's when staff discusses who's gonna be the chair, potentially a vice chair, if we need it, in order to actually just to, to run the meeting.
And do they have to follow Robert's rules, or will they, will they, can they elect to follow Robert's rules?
Legally, you don't, you know, there's just the Brown Act is what, what compiles. There is, whether it's Robert's Rules of Order, whether it's Rosenberg's, some variation in order to keep some order in these, that's what I would recommend, for sure, Mayor.
Okay, so the sta- and the staff will advise, advise them at the first meeting. He's writing that down, that's good. Okay. Great.
Can I ask if it's possible to have an assistant chair? Meaning Kevin or David?
Well, you'll be, they'll be staffing it, so you'll, you'll probably, at the time, you'll discuss every, you'll just have to discuss with the members is that which rules they want to follow, and then, would, they would then have to elect a chair and a vice chair. So, is that correct?
That, that is correct, Mayor, and my only recommendation is, if you want to fill that last slot, which would be the 12th member, with one of your, with one of the council members. You could definitely do it by motion, to officially have that one member there as part of this, as part of this committee.
So, in the meeting or now?
You could do it, you could do it now. I mean, the council themselves, the council, this body is the one that appoints.
So the question, do we, do we want to have, I, I think what I'm hearing is that, do we want to have one voting member or two voting members at this meeting, plus an alternate? Is that, is that correct? And then if we want that second vote, so, can you clarify that?
Absolutely. The, the, because you already have 11 groups, that means 11 members.
Yeah.
Hypothetically, if everybody chose a, a member, now you have 11 members, meaning you only have one slot left. Where, so it's not two councilmembers, it would be only open for one councilmember. To officially be part of this, of this committee.
So, so, no, what I, well, no, what, so, we have numbered one through nine, we, at the top, we have one Cloverdale council, and we're gonna say that's one person, correct? So then you have under 10 and 11, you have CUSD and Fire District.
Then we got one left over.
And we have one left over, so do you want that?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, do you want us to?
Number one is councilmember, so you're right, there's two.
Yeah, so what do you, do you want, so that's the option tonight, is to appoint a second voting councilmember, so it would give us two votes on this board. And so I just.
So, so just for clarification, and, and the confusion was that number one, you're right, it says council, Cloverdale couns- city council. We were doing the math as if all those were, were groups, and not the council.
We are one of the groups.
And that's where we, that's where we got thrown off, so, no. The, it says Cloverdale City Council, I would make it official and say who the two are, if you want the two.
Okay.
That way, there's no question of who the two members are that are on this group from the council.
The question before you is, so we have one appointee, who is Mary Ann. Do we want to, so do we want to have a second appointee? That is, and that's the question before the council, what is the council's pleasure? Do you want to go ahead and appoint him as a voting member?
That's why I said that does, yes. And I think he would be fine to be sitting on that, and then we've got Marta in case one of us are sick or can't go, then.
So in other words, you're nominating Gus to be a full voting member and you're nominating Marta to be an alternate?
That's what she like wants, yep, and so I'm good with that.
Okay. And is there consensus, we don't, we don't need to vote on this, but is there, do we need to vote on this, or is there, you just get consensus about, so we need to vote? So is there a, is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Okay, maybe we have another please.
Okay, Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Alright.
One thing I would like to say about this, though, is I don't see that there's gonna be a lot of voting about anything on this. We're just there to listen, gather information, and come back to council with what the community in large wants to do.
But there may be some, you know, there may be some differences on, or options, you know.
This is gonna turn into kind of a shitshow.
Well, there you go.
So, yeah.
You're the director.
Yeah, it's gonna be, there's gonna be some pretty heavy duty arguing between two or three of these groups. I can see it coming down the pike. So.
But just, yeah, just in case you need to hold a vote on a particular issue, you have the ability to do so. So, and of course, now you got an odd, or you have an even 12, so good luck with that.
Madam Mayor, I have a request. That, that when there are small committees and subcommittees and ad hoc committees, because it's Brown Act, if some of us attend and we have a quorum, I would request that we are introduced to the group and say that we're there as observers.
Can you just, can you make a note of that, Kevin?
You've gotta be a fly on the wall.
Yeah.
You cannot speak, you can do nothing.
It would be nice if the sta- and the staff can do that. The staff can inform the public that.
Because I don't want people to address me in any way.
Sure. Marta, why aren't you saying anything? You're so out of character.
Exactly.
Exactly. That would be weird. That would, like, that would be weird.
Or even Jason.
That's right.
That would be really strange.
Also, also as a fly on the wall, you can't smack your lips or roll your eyes.
Oh, I know that. Believe me, I have studied and I have retained.
There we go. Alright, so I think we have wrapped up that item. Are you happy with the direction and got every, all of, all your notes, and we'll see what happens, alright. So, and actually, I, let's see, we've got, that was number 16? I'm like, I'm counting really well tonight. So number 17, consideration of budget amendment for the removal replacement of a mulch. So who would like to grab that?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor, councilmember.
Do you need to take a break?
May I ask if maybe we can address the resolution because Ms. Lucas?
Leslie, did you want to go home sometime this evening? You know, okay, well, you know what, let's go ahead and, let's swap the order, and we'll take number 18, consider a resolution approving a goal of zero waste. Who would like to take that?
Mayor, councilmembers, I'll, I'll address this topic and maybe this time I can invite Leslie Lukas up to the desk. Leslie is the executive director for Zero Waste Sonoma, which was formerly referred to as the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency. The, the item before you tonight is to consider a resolution approving a goal of zero waste by year 2030. This comes about after, really, what's been a considerable amount of work, first starting with the, what was previously referred to as the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, and then secondarily by what's referred to as the AB 939 Local Task Force. AB 939 set forth pretty strict requirements around reducing waste, and, and the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors appointed this task force to help develop recommendations and create a plan to help reduce solid waste in Sonoma County. Primarily because, well, for a number of reasons, obviously, there's environmental benefits, but also because it, it, it's a, it's an issue of significant public policy concern relative to the amount of capacity in our local landfill, which the agenda points out, we have, you know, approximately 29 years left of remaining capacity. And we know siding, any discussion around siding and developing a new landfill comes with it a very significant cost to our taxpayers and significant environmental considerations. So, this task force was formed to help develop recommendations around how we might increase diversion. When I say increase diversion, it means reduce the amount of material of this landfill. So, therefore, that was kind of the genesis of this recommended policy to seek zero waste by 2030. What's included in your packet is a resolution that sets forth a, a program to help start us on a path of reducing the amount of material that would otherwise go into our landfill. And, you know, it's done in a fashion that, you know, with, with goal targets over time. One of the things that we will be looking at to, to help implement this resolution, if you pass it tonight, is bringing forward a, a proposed ban on polystyrene, which we know is not recyclable and ends up in our landfill and contributes to its diminished capacity. So, it's a little bit of background there on, you know, why we're here tonight. It's really to follow up on the recommendations that were set forth by our Waste Management Agency and our local task force to, you know, help meet our diversion goals that have been set, you know, by, by the state, but also established by our local representatives who have, you know, involved a really wide set of interests to help us address this issue around our landfill capacity. Leslie is, was recently appointed our, our new executive director and is, is gonna be taking on a number of these initiatives, including this, this zero waste and, and proposed polystyrene ban. And so with that, I'd like to maybe turn it over to Leslie, if you want to kind of offer a few thoughts on this item tonight, and, you know, what's some of the goals that we're trying to seek with respect to requesting the council adopt this resolution.
Great, thank you very much for the introduction, and hello to the mayor, vice mayor, and council. I appreciate you hearing this item today. This, as David had mentioned, it's about two years in the making, with a lot of stakeholder input who the community met monthly. And this resolution before you was created by the business sector, the nonprofit sector, as well as government, and many different departments within the county, as well as the city of Santa Rosa. So all, this is a lot of hands and a lot of eyes that is before you in this resolution. And we also decided to create 36 initiatives, which is included in your packet, because we wanted to give your city idea of, you know, if we are gonna set this goal of zero waste, what can the city do? So we took it, the effort to the next step, then we created ideas for you. In my first two months of being at this job, I'm really excited to share with you that things are already happening in Cloverdale. I'm working with your city manager, and we're making sure that your city hall has all the recycling bins it needs that we're gonna be purchasing for you. And I'm already working through your city manager with the Rec and Parks Department to make sure that public spaces also have adequate recycling and recycling bins. And with, on my board is your councilmember Cruz, and she's already put me in contact with the Quanis Club, the Quanis Key Club, your school district board, and the Historical Society to help with their, possibly with their fashion show. So those are all things that are happening in Cloverdale right now, and this resolution helps me do these types of programs for your community. So it's great if we can have this unified voice for Sonoma County and really put Sonoma County on the map of being progressive when we manage our materials. And with this, with the landfill, my children are gonna be younger than I am when our landfill's proposed to be closed. And that's, that's a scary proposition for our community financially, because we would have to possibly outhaul our landfill, our, our waste. So this is really to protect the future of Sonoma County, that we look at the materials we generate as a resource and not as something that we just dispose. So that's my background. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have a question. When are we gonna get a recycling center back? That's the one, the one thing, these are, these are wonderful goals, and I, I am behind them 100%, but there's some really basic things that we lack here in Cloverdale. We've got a couple people who basically made their living, a little extra money, going around, especially my neighborhood, and just collecting cans, and that's how he helped his mom. But there's nowhere to take the cans anymore. And that, I find, this is almost to me laughable if we don't even have those basic things. How do you get people to think about this when there's nowhere for them to take them?
And just so you know, I'm already working on that for you, for Sebastopol and for Cloverda- and for Sonoma. So my idea is to have a roving CRV station, and it's gonna spend a couple of days in Sonoma, two days in Cloverdale, two days in Sebastopol. And yes, these, this area for CRD redemption centers is underserved. I've already been in discussions with.
It's not served at all.
It's not, it's, correct, correct. So I've already been talking to CalRecycle, how we can make this happen, and I've already talked to your hall or recology. And so there's gonna be some grant funding coming up after the first of the year, and I will be applying a, a, for a grant to fund this program so that we can serve the outlier communities, the north, the west, and the east of our county.
I think the big thing with recology is they are gonna have to give us more options for e-waste, for a lot of different things. Once a year, twice a year, isn't really enough up here, 'cause we're so isolated. But the recycling center, I think, is critical if we want to even try and meet these goals.
I agree.
And I think they're good goals. Don't get me wrong.
I agree.
And if I can give any help, moaning at somebody or yelling, just let me know.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm in agreement with this, and I, I think Mary Ann brings up a good point. It sounds like action's being taken. I look forward to hearing the updates on it.
Actually, maybe that's something I should have reported on, but it, it was brought about by the other municipalities, and this was the solution for it.
I'd like a permanent one.
Well, we gotta, we have to start somewhere.
Yeah. This is the first time we've not had anything up here at all.
But it's been for a while, because I've been here three years and I haven't seen anything.
But it's frustrating.
I'm good, Madam.
You're good, okay. Leslie, the other thing that we definitely need help with are, are events and signage for events. We have now, at Friday Night Live, it's not, not just trash receptacles, we have recycling, but they're like incredibly mixed up. So we definitely need some education, some signage, and working with local events, like the citrus fair and, yeah, Friday Night Live, and probably. events, like the Citrus Fair and, yeah, Friday Night Live and probably the car show, so that the recycling is a, is a lot more effective. We're also not doing any kind of, um, food waste recovery that I know of at any of these events, and that's a significant, you know, part of, of this plan. So, we'll also, um, need some help in making sure that, um, the events and the, the, um, restaurants up here, I think we're, I think that that's already, that's underway, is working with the, with restaurants and, and the grocery stores. But it's the, the special events, there's definitely a lot of food waste and, um, uh, not effective recycling bin action going on. So, we just definitely need some, some resources and some, um, education around that, so.
Great.
But we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Cloverdale.
Yes, thank you.
Great. So, um, would anyone from the public like to come forward with any questions for Leslie or the, the ordinance at this time? All right. All right. If not, I will bring it back to the council. Did you have some, uh?
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment that Leslie met with the chamber also, and, uh, there are gonna be a series of meetings so that, um, the businesses are informed prior to when, uh, this becomes, uh, mandatory.
Great. Okay. So, it looks like, um, is there any, any other comments or questions? It's like there's a, there's a resolution on the, the table. If anyone would like to offer it.
Sure. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number Blank Twenty-Nineteen.
Help us out. It's blank, it's a, there's a blank. It's, um, excuse me, through the chair, we did that because we weren't sure whether some of the resolutions were gonna be acted on, and we don't want the number. Oh, you can't get out of sequence. That's true. So, what number do we have?
So, whatever number, twenty nineteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a goal of zero waste by the year twenty thirty.
All right. Is there a second?
I second.
All right.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Begbie?
Aye.
Great. Thank you for coming up and for doing this.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna backtrack to item number seventeen, consideration of budget amendment for the removal and replacement of rubber mulch in Cloverdale's parks.
Mayor, councilmembers, uh, this item is a budget, budget resolution, um, to, again, amend the budget to remove and replace the rubber mulch currently installed in all four city parks. As you're aware, we've been discussing this at the subcommittee level as well as the city council level. We did, uh, conduct an ad hoc for, uh, a couple of meetings as well. At the June twenty-seventh meeting, uh, we presented a preliminary budget of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the removal and replacement. At that time, the council asked us to go back and sharpen the pencil and see what we could do to, to bring that cost down. Uh, we did have a, a good meeting with Hector and I and Recology, and we went to all, we went to all four parks. We kind of identified where the mulch would be dropped, 'cause that was one of the, kind of the unknowns. It was gonna be, needed to be carried far in, um, or what, what, what the situation was. So, with, you know, Hector and I and, and, oh, there was also a Royser representative there to see where the mulch could be dropped. Um, we've identified where it could be placed and where the dumpsters could be placed. And as a result, that's dropped the price down to about a hundred and seven thousand dollars. I also want to give some credit to, uh, Hector for negotiating with Recology for getting a lower price, and that was a result of u- using smaller dumpsters, which, um, cost a little less and it's a little more nimble for them to get into the parks. Um, I'd like to also say that we, we have this estimate, and this includes a ten, ten percent contingency, a ten thousand dollar contingency, but we're also still receiving estimates. Uh, we're trying to get to three to conform with, uh, our purchasing policies. But the recommended action is, the, the hundred and seven thousand dollars reflects the higher of the two we've already seen, so it could potentially be lower than that when we finally get our third estimate. So, our recommendation tonight is to adopt the attached resolution, uh, amending the budget in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand four hundred and, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, the current estimate. And, uh, we're here for the questions. I don't, I didn't, we did have someone from the audience who was here on this, but I think she left, so.
Okay.
You can't blame her.
Yeah, it's been, it's been rough. Um, any questions for Coven at this time? Okay, so.
So, I, I know we voted that we were going to go ahead with, you know, thinking about this, but, um, we were talking too about going slowly, a park at a time, but we've, so we decided not to do that? Just do it all at once?
Well, I think that we're gonna get an economy of scale if we do it all at once.
Yeah, I get that.
And so, that's where that is. Um, I also want to mention, I forgot to mention that, um, if this is approved tonight, on the next council agenda, we'll have on the consent calendar a, a contract with the chosen contractor to complete the work.
Any other questions or?
Well, you know, the only thing I want to say is, um, it is a very big expense for the city, and I just want to make sure that what we're replacing the rubber chips with is definitely what we want in there. And there's gonna no, be no repercussions a couple of years from now that all of a sudden wood chips aren't safe. Um, you know, I, I, I know we've talked about, uh, replacing them with nothing, and, uh, of course, Jose advised me that we just can't do that, so, uh, we have to replace them with something. I just want to make wood, make sure that wood chips is, is the product we want to use, so.
I don't, I don't know if in the future if they'll find something wrong with wood chips, but it's the kind of the current standard, and, um, Mr. Royser has assured us that these are playground-safe wood chips, and this is what most cities are using, and he's offered a, a pretty good deal, we think. And so, this is the best practice at this point.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the, the public. Would anyone like to come forward and, uh, speak on this item? All right, well, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Or is there any further deliberation, or would you like to offer the?
I'd love to offer a motion, Madam Mayor, as long as there's no further deliberation from my colleagues.
There's a number, but they will give us a number.
They'll, they'll give us a number.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion for the City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number Pending, okay, Two Thousand Nineteen, A Resolution of the City, uh, Ca- Council of the City of Cloverdale Approving An Amendment To The Two Thousand Nineteen Twenty Budget In The Not To Exceed Amount Of One Hundred And Seven Thousand, Uh, Seven Hundred And Forty Three Dollars To Incorporate Services Associated With The Removal And Replacement Of Mu- Rubber Mulch Installed In All Four City Parks.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Okay, who, there was a photo finish. Who wants it?
It was mine.
All right.
It's, it's his.
Oh, uh, Lord. It's late. Make up your minds.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Begbie?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number nineteen, Professional Services Agreement With, I don't know how to say that name, so I'm assuming that, um, our city engineer knows how.
Uh, it, it is Lago Marcino.
Lago Marcino. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, before you, uh, City Council is, is a, a, a pending, uh, Professional Service Agreement To Prepare The Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. The reason why the city has to prepare a local hazard mitigation plan is the rules have changed. We prepared one, well, I should say, we, the county prepared one, it's been a few years back, under the A-BAG rules, Association of Bay Area Governments. The rule, the rules have changed, and the federal rules require a local approach to hazard mitigation planning. And so, ergo, this is in front of us. Uh, it prevents us from getting some, uh, hazard mitigation funding. So, at this point, uh, we're kind of over a barrel in terms of, you know, if we wanted to pursue federal funding, we're gonna have to, uh, prepare our own local hazard mitigation plan. And so, before you, you have, uh, a, a proposal that we received. I, I issued a request for proposal back in January. We received, uh, one proposal in March, uh, after negotiating with, with the, the consultant, uh, we've come up with a, a proposed plan so that we can address it according to the federal rules, uh, and I'll say this, Disaster Mitigation Act of Two Thousand and the Code Federation, uh, Federal Regulations Sections Forty-Four CFR Two Zero One Point Six, to establish a local hazard mitigation plan. Are there any questions?
I have some questions. Do you guys have any?
Basically, what is the reimbursement on this one?
Uh, basically, we have a, 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 Cal OES through FEMA is giving us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to do this. Uh, we will be responsible for the remainder. So, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent split.
So, we're gonna be, um, Cloverdale, the city of Cloverdale will be paying about fifty grand?
That's correct.
And is there a cap on that?
A two hundred thousand dollar cap.
Okay. I have some questions, but I'm hold, hold.
I'm good.
Marta, did you have anything else? Okay, um, so, a couple of, just a couple of questions. Will this, um, affect, like, our current FEMA applications, or is it all?
There are no pending FEMA applica-, the only applications we have in front of FEMA are dealing with recovery efforts. Uh, there's nothing out there right now in terms of, you know, uh, do, getting funding done to, for preventive measures.
Okay, great. And then, um, under the options in item, or Option One, there's a zero-dollar amount? Is that intentional in the, in the staff report, under Option One?
Yeah, no, that was a mistake.
Big zeros.
And so, big zeros, yeah.
Yeah.
What, and sorry, what, and so what would that amount be?
It is, let me look at the, the proposal, please.
One hundred and ninety.
One ninety? Is it just the plug in the one ninety number?
That's it.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, like, you know, and actually, before I go any, any further, for clarification, I'll ask the public if, if they would like to come forward and ask any questions or comment on this item. If not, I'll, I'll bring it back to the council. And I had a couple more questions, but I want to wait and let, let the rest of the council, do you have anything else? Okay. And can you just, um, give an overview? How long will this take and what, what is this process gonna look like? I know, I know it was detailed a little bit later, but just if you could give us a synopsis.
Okay, correct. Uh, this is, uh, basically a twelve-month effort to come up with a draft plan, and, and that includes a lot of community outreach and, and outlining, basically, what are all the hazards here in Cloverdale and that we need to address and have a plan to, to, you know, address them as they happen. Uh, twelve months, uh, then it'll take another, I would say, give it another six months before we bring it back to council for adoption.
And then what are the examples of what they're looking at? I mean, is this, it's like, you know, flood, fire, water?
You name it, you know. It's flood, fire, water, uh, accidents at the airport, um, you know, anything you can conceive of in terms of a, a real hazard. And I'm not talking about, you know, a meteorite falling, falling in the sky, although that's a possibility, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're not addressing tsunamis, but we will be addressing earthquakes, you know, something that, along those lines. So, earthquake, of course, we will have severe shaking here, so how do we address that? Well, maybe we should start up, upping our building code to address, you know, severe shaking, you know, tying these lights down.
So, the recent, the, the rock and mudslides, for example?
Indeed, you know, deluge, we, obviously, we experienced a lot of deluge around here, and so we do, do need to address that and, and just be prepared to, uh, respond.
So, do the changes in, so, the, changes on our weather patterns due to climate change, like the atmospheric rivers, are tho- are those accounted for in a plan like this?
Well, yes.
And then, and then coupled with our, our, like, aging infrastructure, will it actually point out which infrastructure needs to be addressed and, like, make us, make us eligible for federal grants, or?
Indeed, it would, because the, uh, for example, I was gonna address the downtown drainage that goes through downtown, 'cause it's antiquated. It's, you know, it's, it's way past its useful life.
That was generous, but thank you. Yes.
It needs to be replaced. Uh, so I went for federal funding for that, and that's when they informed us that local hazard mitigation needs to address that first before we can give you some funding.
So, did the, the drainage situation in downtown actually trigger the need for this, for performing this?
I think my seeking federal funds for it triggered-
Okay.
-the local hazard mitigation plan. It's a requirement, uh, a lot of cities have not addressed that.
So, in order for us to be eligible for it, we have to complete this hazard mitigation plan?
Indeed, it's, it's qualifying for federal rules. It, it follows the FEMA rules.
Okay. So, what if then there are, um, other things that happen that were not necessarily covered in the hazard mitigation plan? Are we still, i- i- if it's something that was not, um, taken into account, are we still eligible for, for FEMA funding, or?
It would not preclude us.
Okay, wouldn't preclude us. It's, so, we, we, we're not gonna be in the, like, insurance policy thing where we had to name the thing?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I mean, we, we'll do a reasonable approach on addressing every possible hazard that we can face here in Cloverdale.
Yeah.
Beyond, beyond that, like I said, if, if the loo-, you know, if we had a meteorite strike, well, obviously, that was unanticipated.
So, this wouldn't include the, um, um, like, the, the plumes, the underground, uh, plumes of contamination that, um, exist now?
It would include actual contamination. I mean, you are, we, you will be, you know, you look through the, the specific, I would say, chapter headings, but they're very general in terms of how, what you're addressed. And if those are local issues, like a plume, you know, what are the hazards for that? And, you know, you do a risk chart, and you say, well, this is a minimal risk really, because it's already being addressed. So, you gotta take it, like, you know, you list it out, but then you address it very methodically in, in terms of what are the risks for something like that.
Yeah, it's kind of, it would be kind of interesting. So, you're gonna be working pretty closely with the water agency too, in something like that?
Well, actually, the regional one would, the regional one would have to address that.
Regional water quality.
Exactly. We're looking, we're focused only on Cloverdale with this local hazard mitigation plan. So, it's, it's within the city limits, more or less. Uh, the county's gonna be renewing what, theirs in about two years, and they will take a, a larger regional vi- vision of, of the hazards within the county, and that Cloverdale will have one already helps them along in terms of addressing what our, our needs are here in this area.
Sure, I was just thinking about just Cloverdale, not the cone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I have another question, but I just want to make sure I open it up to anybody else. Okay. So, what are the, the borders? Is it strictly our existing city limits, or does it go to our sphere of influence and our urban growth boundary?
You, you stumped me on that one. I'm not sure if it's within the sphere of influence. I mean, I would have to look at the federal laws on that one, because it's for the city of Cloverdale.
Because we have some anticipated, yes, we have some anticipated annexations, and so I'm wondering if, yes, so.
Right, indeed. So, maybe it's within the sphere of influence, but I wouldn't defer that to a later response.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Um, we need to, but we need to vote on this, correct?
It's a resolution.
Cause it's, cause it's mine, so.
And, and for the council's reference, uh, staff has, uh, removed reference to resolution numbers, uh, and really all that staff's asking is just that you read the resolution title without the number.
Okay.
And, and that enables, you know, any confusion over, over numbers. Those will obviously be established once, once council and if council adopts, uh, adopts the resolution.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to offer the resolution?
Sure.
Unless there's further deliberation right now.
City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number Blank Twenty-Nineteen, A Resolution Of The City Council Of The City Of Cloverdale Approving A Professional Service Agreement With Lago Marcino Planning And Management LLC To Prepare A Local Hazard Mitigation Plan In The Amount Of One Hundred And Ninety Eight Thousand Three Hundred And Ten Dollars. So, it's not, it shouldn't say-
Two hundred?
It's not right?
It's up to, it can't go any higher than that?
Uh, beyond two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
The city of Cloverdale would be responsible for that amount, so.
Okay.
We're responsible for fifty thousand, the feds are responsible for a hundred and fifty thousand. If it goes over the two hundred thousand dollar project limit, then the city of Cloverdale picks up that hu- one hundred percent.
So, we make sure that it doesn't go over that, correct?
Indeed, yep.
Okay. Um, two, authorizing the city manager his designee to approve contract amendments up to ten percent of the original contract amount to address any unforeseen complexities related to the LHMP preparation. And three, authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement and amendments on behalf of the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Council, uh, Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Begbie?
Aye.
Great, okay, we need to move on to the fun stuff. Oh, is it, pardon me?
No.
I said, we get, we get to move on to the fun stuff. We get to talk about the purchase of one Vector truck. Who would like to talk about that?
Okay, I will talk about that. We have a nineteen ninety-six Vector truck, but it is a, it's a secondary vehicle, and we do use it, uh, especially in times of emergency. The, this Vector truck is past its useful life. Uh, it's a twenty-two-year-old, twenty-three-year-old vehicle, uh, and it's, these, these vehicles tend to be very mechanical, so you can imagine a, a chassis, a truck, a large truck chassis with this massive vacuum cleaner on it, basically. And so, these parts do wear down, they do break down. It becomes a point of no return in terms of trying to continue to repair it. So, what I'm looking for is its replacement with a new Vector truck. And it is a costly little item, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions for the engineer?
Can we, can we use it to suck up the rubber mulch in the?
We, we, we thought about that. We cannot.
We can't.
Are you sure?
One more time, I thought I had.
So, on, on that note, I will open it up to the public. If anyone like to come forward and talk about Vector trucks. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any further deliberation?
I did see that Vector truck today working by city park.
Pretty cool.
It looks pretty pitiful.
Yeah. It's in pretty sad shape. Okay. Would anyone like to offer the resolution?
Just one point of clarification also, if I may, Mayor?
Sure.
Is this, this, we will put in the order for the Vector truck. They are manufactured on our order, so we won't see this here for about six months.
Oh, wow. Okay. So, we'll have to, we'll have to make it last. Okay. All right. And did Susie have something, too?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing that the, when we budgeted this, we budgeted $220,000, so this is $80,000 additional dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, this is a house, basically, yeah. Or, you know, used to be in the old market, but anyway.
Okay. Still is now in some places.
In some places, not here. Okay. Would anyone like to offer the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution. Haven't read anything today.
There you go.
Okay, resolution pending, 2019, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale awarding a contract for the purchase of one combination single-engine sewer cleaner, is that it? Oh, yes, with positive displacement vacuum system mounted on a heavy-duty truck chassis, AKA Vector truck, and associated necessary equipment to the Owen Equipment Company of Fairfield, California, in an amount not to exceed $306,500, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute said purchase contract and an amending the FY 2019-20 budget to reflect unbudgeted costs.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All right.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Begbie?
Aye.
All right. There seem to be no subcommittee items, so we are going to move on to subcommittee reports. And the airport next meets on October 1st at 10:00 a.m. Finance Administration and Police next meets August 22nd at 4:00 p.m. So, next is Planning and Community Development.
Yes, the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee will meet on August 20th at 4:00 p.m. Cloverdale City Hall. Thank you. And the next Public Works Subcommittee will be September 24th, 2019 at 4:00 p.m.
Joint City Fire District?
Pending. And Joint City School District, August 19th, 4 o'clock City Hall, I mean, 5 o'clock City Hall.
So, council reports. I've submitted mine in writing, but it didn't make it here tonight, so I guess it will go in the, it'll go in the packet.
It was on the dice.
Is it on the dice? Okay, great. There you go. Keep up to date.
I just have two. I want to thank the police and the police chief and our police staff for a wonderful national night out. Had a whale of a time. Wesley loved it. That new UTV they have was quite a popular item for the kids to play on, so thank you guys for putting that on. And participated in the Chamber Commerce Board of Directors meeting, and there just continues to be fantastic work out of that group.
I agree. Do you have any? Nope.
I submitted mine in writing.
I think we're all happy to have Vice Mayor back well and even more mobile after his hip surgery, so.
It works good.
Which work and green, yeah. Do you have anything else to report on your hip?
Not at all.
I don't think, you're probably tired to talk about at this point. So, anything on the legislative front? Is there a legislative report?
No reports on the legislative.
All right. City manager, city attorney report?
Mayor, council, two items I just want to give you a quick update on. The city received notice from the Federal Aviation Administration that we are the recipient of a grant for the airport totaling $990,000.
Woo-hoo!
That's for our taxiway rehabilitation project. I know city engineers working on bringing forward an award of contract for the bidders, for the preferred or recommended contractor, based on the bids, at a meeting to be determined. And along with that, we'll be bringing forward a budget adjustment, because neither that revenue nor the cash match that's required for that grant are included in the budget. But that's a very significant funding source for important improvements at our airport. Likewise, we also received notification that we were the recipient of a, what's called a TDA Article III, or Transportation Development Act Article III grant totaling about $110,000. That's to cover our costs related to our bicycle and pedestrian improvements for our signalization project at Treadway, Santana, and the Boulevard. So, again, a portion of the cost of that project will be covered by grant from Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So, two existing sources of grant funds for local projects.
Great. Thanks for all of your hard work on that. That's fantastic. Any council direction on future agenda items? All right.
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
City manager, David Kelly and I spoke, I guess it was last week, right after the mass shootings that happened. And, you know, I'm thinking that it would be nice if we could come out with some type of a symbolic resolution stating the council's position, and I assume we're all coming from the same position of not condoning the ownership of semi-automatic weapons. I just don't know where to take that, but I think we should make some type of statement to the community. There's a lot of cities that are taking other actions, passing resolutions, and doing what they can, and I would just like to explore what we can do as a city. So, I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, at one time, too, we had a possibility of, there actually, there's a gun shop that was interested in opening in Cloverdale, and I'd like to look at ordinances to prohibit gun sales in gun shops in town as another item, and that could probably go to Finance Administration initially, and then we can bring it to the council if there's any agreement on that or any dissent on that. Okay?
What exactly?
Looking at an ordinance that would prohibit gun sales in Cloverdale.
I'd have to think on that one.
Yeah.
I'm not a big gun fan, but on the other hand, I'm not a fan of eliminating sectors. It's kind of prejudicial in some ways.
Well, we can certainly look at language and investigate it, and we can bring it to a vote for the council. So, but I would definitely be in favor of what the Vice Mayor suggested as well.
Yeah, I don't want to see a symbolic resolution be tied up with a change of an ordinance. I'd like to see us do something and bring it back at the next city council meeting. And I'd be more than happy to work with city staff if you give me the individual to work with.
You're talking semi-automatic weapons.
Semi-automatics and, you know.
I'd be really happy to get on board with that one.
I'd be happy to do that. I'll hold my, I'll hold my request for a later time.
I would think the chief, too, could give us some suggestions. I mean, I say semi-automatic. I don't know a musket from a semi-automatic. I just, I just know that we don't need machine guns, and so whatever the, whatever the verbiage is to address all of that, I'd like to see about doing it.
There, welcome to the party. I told you the honeymoon was over. Okay. I think you have clear direction on that, is that we'll look at it.
I note the council's support for bringing forward a resolution. How about if it's okay with Vice Mayor, Chief Ferguson and I work with you on drafting some language that would support a position on automatic and semi-automatic weapons and bring it forward for council's consideration?
I'd like that. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. All right. Well, with that, are there any, are there any other directions for future agenda items? Okay. Well, seeing none, we will adjourn to a regular reading of the city council on Wednesday, August 28.